All right, so it is seven o'clock and I'd like to begin this meeting of the Committee of the Whole of Urbana on Monday, May 18th, 2020. I called the meeting to order and I invite the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Okay, council members Brown?
Here.
Colbrook?
Here.
Percy?
Here.
Jacobson? Jacobson? Taylor?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
And it looks like Eric has joined us as well, so Eric?
Yes, Jacobson is here.
Okay.
Very good, okay, appreciate that. All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of our minutes from May 4th, 2020. Is there any, any motion on that?
All the minutes.
Second.
Okay, so Jared made the motion. And Sherri's seconded it. Were there any corrections?
Yeah, I have one.
Okay, Bill, go ahead.
Let's see. On page two, item six. Talking about the sidewalk in front of the OSF facility. It says a culvert would also be required at a cost of about $120,000. I don't think it's clear that the culvert isn't going to be required as part of this agreement. It says there was discussion about sidewalks, community development director had confirmed the OSF would provide a sidewalk in front of the property. And then it says a culvert would also be required at a cost of about $120,000. That culvert would only be required if they connected to the intersection and that wasn't part of the, part of the proposal. So I'd suggest we change that to discussion of connection to the intersection. Suggested a culvert would be required at a cost of about $120,000, but that was not part of this project. Would that work?
I think it would.
So noted.
Okay.
All right. I accept that, I suppose we all do. So with the corrections, we have a motion and a second with an amendment to it, correction. Any other corrections? All those in favor of approving the minutes as read and corrected indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that passes. All right. Are there any additions to the agenda? And I know there are some, okay, yes. Mary Alice Wu.
Um, so I know that we're gonna have a presentation tonight from Carol about EMCOR. I'm wondering if we should add in a discussion item about that or if the discussion of the presentation would take care of that? Any discussion by council members?
To the council members who want to weigh in on that, Carol Mitten did suggest that the presentation should be added because there is information that's that's of importance to the community and she wants to do some clarifications about the EMCOR, EMCOR project.
I second adding that item to the agenda.
Okay, so we got Mary Alice Wu made the motion. And Jared Miller seconded it. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. I also, any opposed? Okay, so we're gonna add that, we're gonna add that into the they'll be a part of public presentations and public input number five on the agenda.
Dennis?
Yes.
Diane? I'd like to remove an item from the agenda, that would be number 10, discussion on emergency order status. We don't have it ready yet for discussion at this meeting, so hopefully for next week.
Certainly, that makes sense. Okay, the mayor's asked that item be removed, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All right, anybody opposed? Okay, we'll take that off the agenda, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other additions or changes in the agenda? Okay, I don't see anybody raising a hand, all right. Well, we're going on now to do, we're gonna divert our attention for a moment to cover the need for having a public hearing. And the public hearing is to consider an amendment to the 2015-2019 Consolidated Plan, Annual Action Plan for the year, fiscal year 2019-2020, for the City of Urbana to receive and administer $294,966 in community development block grant CV funds. They're known as CDBG funds. From funding from this US Department of Housing and Urban Development, known as HUD, which are made available through the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, i.e. CARES Act. I do have a text to read at this point. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide an opportunity for the public to provide input and comments regarding a proposed amendment to the City of Urbana and the Urbana Home Consortium Consolidated Plan, Annual Action Plan for the Fiscal Years 2019-2020. Notice of the public hearing was faxed and/or emailed to the media, emailed to various social service agencies and citizens, and placed on the cities of Urbana's website on May 14th, 2020. I now declare this public hearing open. And if anyone desires to express their views regarding the proposed amendment to the Annual Action Plan, please come forward and be recognized at this time. Your written comments will also be welcome. So I'm going to wait to see if there's anybody in the public who's come to us in a virtual manner would like to make a comment. Okay, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing any public participation at this time.
And I have no, no emailed correspondence either, Dennis.
Okay, so, so we haven't had any, any public input so far on this issue. So I guess that means I'll close that public hearing, thank you very much for trying to participate. Seeing that there are no further comments or requests to be heard, I declare the public hearing closed. All right. All right, we're gonna go now to the presentations and public input. And I guess probably the first thing to do would be allow the city administrator to do the presentation and then we're gonna hear from members of the community who may wish to make comments and also, I guess, any city council member who'd like to make a comment or question.
Dennis, could I make a suggestion that we do non-related public input first and then Carol's presentation afterwards?
Yes. Yeah, I guess I'm not sure what other public participation items our participants want to be heard at this time. So I guess if you have anything else that has nothing to do with the EMCOR project, but you want to address the council, it'd be wise to do it at this time.
Okay, Dennis? I've got, I've got three items of public input then to read.
Fine, okay, that's the way that we're gonna receive them, I guess, tonight.
Okay.
So go ahead, Charlies, and please do that.
From Dr. Evelyn Underwood and Bishop King James Underwood, they, for the record, want to note that they are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. Then from Ron Kester to mayor and council, I commend you for first steps in responding to the Aleah Lewis police brutality case by advocating for her with the state's attorney, initiating an independent investigation and adopting the NAACP's 10 Shared Principles of Police Community Interactions. I also applaud the shared decision-making that produced these changes and commend you for viewing the problem as more than just an issue of police procedure and criminal prosecution. Bringing together civil rights advocates in the community was a good step forward. I believe more still needs to be done. First, the officers involved in the violent confrontation with Ms. Lewis should be put on administrative leave pending the completion of the independent investigation. Without this, the investigation seems more like image management than an impartial review of a serious matter. Further, if the independent investigation concludes that police misconduct did take place, then in any, then any cases the officers were involved with in the interim will likely have to be dismissed by the state. Second, another investigation should take place. This about the Urbana police officers who attempted to pressure the citizen journalist who made the video of the assault into removing it from the, from social media. Were the police in uniform when they contacted the citizen journalist at his home? Did they report their interaction to Chief Seraphin afterward? How was the decision made to suppress this evidence? That police visited a citizen's residence to suppress political speech is chilling. It also suggests a possible crisis in general administrative oversight. Third, the Urbana Civilian Police Review Board has been shown to be inadequate to the task of addressing citizen concerns, informing the public, and holding the police accountable to a high standard. The city should review the CPRB's procedures, performance, and mission with a mind toward making it more accessible and effective for all citizens of Urbana. Thank you again for what you've done to move the conversation forward, let's do more to address the full magnitude of the crisis, Ron Kester. And then from Alan Axelrod, good evening, Urbana City Council. First, day one demand in reaction to the charges filed against Aleah Lewis has been to drop the charges. Let's suppose for a moment that the City of Urbana does not have influence on the charges that Aleah Lewis is facing, then why can't you advocate on her behalf? Drug court for legal to consume edibles is blaming a survivor of police escalation and violence. We deserve a city that will be doing better. Secondly, there is a petition by the Sierra Club to save the trees on Green Street that currently, that current development plans would endanger. If Urbana continues to cut down trees to improve property values, then maybe we should rename the City of Urbana from the City of Trees to the City of Rental Properties. Alternatively, we could make special considerations to preserve the trees or at least demonstrate that effort has been made. Finally, there is a bill to pay landlords' rent and to mortgage payments to the bank using federal funds. It is HB 5574 and would also alleviate the rent and mortgage burden of Urbana's residents. This is important because it would free up citizens' funds to buy food and other essential goods. Since Urbana depends on sales and use taxes, would be something that the representatives of Urbana could advocate for. Okay, that is...
There was one more, Charlie.
Which one?
Tammy McDivitt. Geese at Crystal Lake from...
Oh, right, yes, that's, okay, yes, give me a second, let me get to that one. That one, I actually responded to her and forwarded it to the Park District. So she's, she said, Dear City Council, as a lifelong Champaign County resident, I would like to take a moment to say that I think the charity harvest is a bad choice. Many of us that have grown up in the area and have come to think of the geese as a natural part of the park. With this being said, I do understand that the geese population does need to be thinned out. Now more than ever, there are so many human possibilities for relocation that the harvest seems a bit drastic. Please reconsider the harvest and seek other remedies. Thank you for reminding me. Okay, I think that, now I've covered all the ones that are not related to the...
Charlie, there's another one that just came through.
Okay, I guess.
All right, go ahead then, Charlie.
Well, I can't control the, it's Tracy Chong. You, Jason, or you can unmute her.
All right, let's see.
Hi.
Oh, all right. Hello.
Sorry, okay, hi, my name is Tracy Chong from Urbana. I would like to bring up the issue of how Urbana City Clerk Charlie Smith has been using dishonest methods to prevent residents from obtaining public records through Freedom of Information Act FOIA requests. This is a concerning issue as these documents pertain to police officer actions and city employee conduct. In one example, Mr. Smith improperly categorized me as a recurrent requestor so that the city could delay FOIA responses. I appealed his improper designation to the Illinois Attorney General Public Access Counselor, who then questioned Mr. Smith's actions. It was only then did the city admit their wrongdoing. It is concerning that the city clerk Charlie Smith, the lead FOIA officer for Urbana, does not know the FOIA law and is wrongly using it to withhold public documents. Mr. Smith also has been assigning new FOIA numbers to cases where I send follow-up emails to check for documents that were omitted from my initial FOIA request. Also, another tactic to invoke the recurrent requestor designation. There have also been instances where Mr. Smith has declared a FOIA request burdensome and then imposes his own rules to how a, how a requestor narrows the scope of the request. I would also like to remind city council that Charlie Smith is still refusing to release complete body cam footage for all officers in the Aleah Lewis case. Why are only selected portions of the body cam footage released to the public? I would like city council members to look into what Charlie Smith is doing and make the appropriate changes for a more honest and transparent FOIA process. Thank you.
Okay, so I believe that covers then the...
There's one more, Dennis, Christopher.
All right.
Can you hear me?
Yes, it looks like I can.
Okay, good, hi, my name's Christopher Hansen, I live in Urbana. I just wanted to resonate some of the things that Ms. Chong just said about FOIA requests. I've submitted a lot of FOIA requests to Urbana, City of Champaign, Champaign County Jail, both police departments, University of Illinois. Urbana's transparency and FOIA response is wretched. It is horrible. The city is not transparent. I don't want to hear anyone else on the city council or the mayor talk about transparency until you spent 10 hours sitting down leafing through all of Charlie Smith's FOIA denials. You guys are not transparent. You deny requests, ignore requests. I've also gotten letters from the Illinois Attorney General indicating that Smith has improperly denied requests. And his bag of tricks is endless and I think the answer, the explanation for it is simply cronyism. I mean, he's, he's been, Charlie has been involved in this government for decades. And most of the FOIA denials are in regards to improper conduct by Charlie's friends in the city. Moving on to police department, again, a lot of the denials are in regards to the police department and their conduct. And this is entirely relevant given the discussion around the Lewis arrest. And I've been working on, you know, police department conduct and documents for years now and the city's response is just awful. Moving into, like, for example, police department complaints. A citizen cannot, if they submit a police department complaint, they cannot obtain a copy of their own investigation into their own complaint. The city will redact the bulk of it and you won't be able to see anything that's been discussed internally about your complaint. And as far as, last week I spoke about the civilian police review board, the CPRB. I want to remind the council that Chief Seraphin is actively denying citizen complaints through the CPRB. I've seen several such letters. I have last received a letter from a police officer who was denying a complaint in which that officer was named. He denied his own complaint in a letter to me. I've, I've seen letters from James Simon denying complaints. And just today, I got a letter on Urbana Police Department letterhead with Chief Bryant Seraphin's name at the top, denying a complaint, and then it's signed at the bottom by Carol Mitten, city administrator. Carol, when did you start working for the police department and why are you denying police complaints that are being made by citizens? The, the complaints aren't even getting to the CPRB and that's not to mention, to get to the point of how badly the CPRB functions in the first place. They don't understand their directive, they don't understand their ordinance. They haven't been issuing quarterly or annual reports for five years. Last year, they voted to stop reviewing taser usage, which they can't even do legally, they can't change their own ordinance. And no one in the city is doing anything about it. I think the, the police department has been largely involved in diluting this CPRB over the last several years. And everyone seems fine with it and I don't understand why this isn't a major issue of discussion by the city council now. Thank you.
All right, we appreciate the public input. Having no more individuals who wish to speak before the city council?
Dennis?
Yes.
I think that there's one more email that came through.
Okay, I'm not looking at emails, so thank you for letting us know. And Charlie, are you receiving that as well?
Yeah, that one's related to the, to Green Street, I believe. The last one I got, the most, I'm looking at the latest one, which was from Alan Axelrod.
Okay. All right, so we're only covering currently the...
Charlie, Dennis?
Yes.
There is one from Dr. Evelyn Underwood.
I got that one at the very beginning, or does she have something else?
Oh, I didn't hear you read it, sorry, okay.
All right. Yeah, we appreciate Dr. Evelyn Underwood's continued interest in the sewer system problems in our neighborhood. All right, so we have a conversation coming up now concerning the EMCOR project. And Carol has prepared some statements and presentation of sorts, so Carol, I guess I invite you to make a presentation and then we'll have public comment.
Okay, thank you very much and I'm gonna have some help on this, on this presentation. But we're actually really happy to be able to do a deep dive into the efforts that we've made as part of the EMCOR Phase 5 project to preserve trees because over the past few years while the project was being designed, there were, you know, staff really took pains to minimize the number of conflicts between the infrastructure to be installed and healthy trees. And, and we have, there were multiple design iterations as a result of that. And I really want to give credit to two employees that are no longer with the city who, who really spearheaded these efforts. One was Mike Bronk, our former city arborist, and the other was Craig Schonkweiler, who was the Assistant City Engineer for Transportation, who worked really hard and did multiple design iterations to, you know, to minimize the conflicts. So what we're gonna share with you tonight is, because of the questions that have come forward, is we want to explain for each tree that will, that is designated to be removed, we want to walk through the reasons for that. And we have the benefit of notes and I had shared a listing of the notes. I'm not sure if all the council members got it, but it's also posted on the, on the, I think it's on the clerk's website for this meeting. So we have notes from Mike Bronk when, when he walked the, the project. We have notes from our Davy Treekeeper Inventory, which, those notes are from 2013, but they're informative. And then Kevin Sanderson, who is the current city arborist, personally re-inspected every tree last week. So we have, we have all of those, all of that input. And, you know, one of the things I think we'd like to share with people tonight is that there, some trees look healthy, but on closer inspection, they, they aren't as healthy as they look. So there are a number of our team members who are on the, who are in attendance with us tonight. And we may end up calling on them as, as you have questions. But Justin is gonna, is gonna walk you through the, the various trees to be removed and he'll start with a little background on the project so that you understand for anyone joining the conversation more recently, what the EMCOR project is intended to implement. I'm gonna turn to Justin Swinford now.
Welcome, Justin.
All right, thank you. So yeah, I'm Justin Swinford, civil engineer for the City of Urbana. So yeah, as Carol mentioned, the EMCOR, this is EMCOR Project 5 on Green Street. EMCOR stands for Multi-Modal Corridor Enhancement Project. So the, the multi-modal part plays a key role in what we're discussing tonight because we're gonna talk about sidewalks, which, for pedestrians and, and bus stops and transit infrastructure for people that ride MTD buses. That is a big component of the overall, all five projects. You know, you can see a lot of that in the Campus Town area and that's extending into Urbana as well, along this section of Green Street. So we're gonna, we're gonna walk through the, you know, the list of trees. A couple of things to keep in mind as we do that is, you know, this is a full reconstruction of Green Street, including the roadway and the sidewalks. Construction is really, this kind can be kind of invasive, especially when we have trees with shallow root systems. And unhealthy trees can sometimes not withstand all that construction activity. And then, again, the sidewalk and the ramps being a part of this project, you know, it, it's current, the current conditions of Green Street and the sidewalks and the ramps along Green Street aren't that great. And that's something that we certainly have to improve. It's actually a state requirement that we improve, you know, the sidewalk ramps to make them ADA accessible as part of this construction project. So to do that, we, we have to work with elevation changes and and regrading the, the land around those sidewalk ramps. And so then, one last thing before we get started, the, there was previously an exhibit shared that showed 18 trees to be removed along the section of Green Street. The exhibit we're gonna show tonight has 19 trees, that's not an added tree. Recently, that was a tree that was missed when creating that exhibit. So we've always had 19 trees to be removed as part of the, the project since the final plans were put together. I don't want that to be a surprise when we get to that last tree, so.
Justin, when was, when was the final number of trees selected? Was that rather a while ago or was that, I mean, the, I guess the diagram of the tree removal was recently released, so.
Yeah, and, and that diagram showed all 19 trees. I just, I just didn't put a red X on one of them. So the, the final selection for the trees to be removed was made, you know, yet this spring before we put the project out to bid, some of the impacts on that were related to the easements that we were able to get or that we couldn't get to, to put the new sidewalk around some of those trees to, to save some of those. So, you know, we do have, it's, it's actually a pretty nice feature of the project. We have some nice kind of curving, swooping sidewalks that will go around some trees that we're able to incorporate into the project plans. And in order to do that, in some cases, we needed easements. As we go through the list, we'll, we'll touch on a couple where we weren't able to get a, a permanent easement to allow for the construction of that sidewalk. And so unfortunately, there were some trees that we couldn't accommodate. So I'm going to share my screen here so we can look at the exhibit. Hopefully. Okay.
Okay, good.
Trying to make that as big as possible here. Okay, so hopefully you can see that. So we're gonna start on the west end of the project. This is between Lincoln Avenue and Bucie. So trees number one and two are shown on this sheet. Tree number one is a sugar maple that we've classified as an unhealthy tree with a bad crotch on, on one side, included bark. And I'm reading from Kevin Sanderson's notes, so I hope this makes sense to some people. Soft root flare on one side and a hollow sounding trunk with a hammer. And then I'm gonna go straight to number two here, which is also an unhealthy tree in major decline. Trunk completely hollow, very limited holding wood failure, high risk. So trees one and two, both are, are located where we have our enhanced bus stop. So that's our, a new bus stop with a large shelter and, and the MTD kiosk that'll eventually go in on the project too. So this is our, our biggest bus stop along this stretch of Green Street and one of the major transit improvements for the project. So we'll go now to the, the next sheet. Tree number three is a, a tree that's gonna be susceptible to bad weather. It's a Siberian elm that is susceptible to ice or wind. And it also has a major lean to it, so it's, it's, this one, it's not just leaning over the street, but it's actually leaning away from a, and kind of encroaching on a really nice tree just to the north of it. So that tree was, the Siberian elm was removed in favor of the healthier tree immediately to the north of it. Tree number four is a sugar maple that's unhealthy, declining tree with major trunk damage. This one is also relatively close to the the sidewalk ramps at the intersection of um, Bucie or Green Street and Kohler Avenue. And then the last one on the sheet, number five, is also a sugar maple that's unhealthy and declining. It's got a major trunk wound on one side. Um, and I guess just to to stop here and and you know, we've mentioned so far, a lot of unhealthy trees are susceptible trees. These are the trees that we would be concerned about. Tearing the sidewalk up and the street up around those trees is gonna do major damage to an already declining or unhealthy tree. So then, tree number six is a red maple. This one's. There, this tree can, is conflicting with a proposed bus stop at the corner of. Orchard and Green Street.
Could you move the thing so I could see where tree number six is?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you not see?
I can't see it. I don't know if anyone else can. Can everybody else see it and I'm not seeing it?
Yeah, it's on the screen. It is on the screen and it's visible.
Okay, hold on. I'm just trying to.
Okay, I can give you a second if you wanna. Pull that up.
Okay, I can, I can see it a little better now.
Okay, okay. Um, so I was saying, this tree is a a red maple. It's conflicting with a proposed bus stop. The location of that bus stop was considered and, you know, in order to save this tree, it was possible to move that bus stop a little further to the west. But as you can see here, there's a another tree that's in a better condition that was. There that can be saved by putting the bus stop closer to the corner. So, so this is a case where you, uh, a bus stop was to be added at this intersection and. It was conflicting with a couple of trees. Tree number seven on the the north side of the street there. Is um, is also an unhealthy tree. There's dieback in the canopy, uh, cavity in the center. Um, and poor structure. Tree number eight is a sugar maple that's um, declining. It's actually dead at the top and there's. A cavity at the root flare. This and then. Tree number nine there at the intersection of McCullough and Green Street um, is. Really close to the the corner of that intersection where the the sidewalk ramps are going. And. There, uh, the notes here show that that's a very unhealthy tree as well. It's uh, ha- it has a hollow sounding trunk. And um, and this is the tree actually that has bees in it.
That's the one that wasn't marked uh, on the map originally in red.
Yes, this is the, yes. This is the one that was not previously marked. So moving to the next page here. Tree number ten is a Norway maple that is unhealthy and uh, showing some rotting. Uh, it's also, as you can see here, really close to an existing driveway. So as part of the project, we're replacing the driveway approaches within the right of way. So between the sidewalk and the street and and when that. When that driveway approach is replaced, that's gonna be really close to the tree. Tree number eleven is a Siberian elm, I believe, that, yeah, is. It's showing some bacterial wet wood. And um, and some dead wood. So um, that's considered an unhealthy tree. And then trees twelve and thirteen there at the corner. So those are in conflict with the bus stop. However, both of those trees are um, are unhealthy trees. And uh, those are the first we show with a hazard rating, actually. So a a hazard rating of seven, which is out of ten, which means that. There's a significant poten- uh, potential for those trees to fall, um, or part parts of those trees to fall. So given that's, that those trees are um, hanging over the sidewalk in the street, that's, that's certainly something we need to address. And then um, and those trees are both silver maples. Tree number fourteen is a a sugar maple that also is um, unhealthy and we have an a hazard rating of six for that tree. Uh, you'll also notice that tree is really close to the the intersection and would conflict with the the sidewalk ramps to be replaced. And then the last one on on the sheet at the far right. Tree number fifteen, this is the the first one on our list here that um, we, we. Uh, tried multiple times to negotiate with the property owner for, to grant the city an easement to. Do a a curve of of the sidewalk around the tree, but we were unable to um, to get that easement. So we, uh, again, we have to build the sidewalk within the right of way and. Unfortunately, that means we'll have to remove that tree. Okay, um, onto the last page here. Tree number sixteen is a sugar maple. And that is showing rot. That one's also very close to the the driveway there um, at three oh three green. And then tree number seventeen is the the second tree that we were un- unable to preserve with the an easement. So that one's really close to the existing sidewalk. The, the new sidewalk will go pretty much in the same place that that one exists. And that means removal of the tree.
And that was a a tree in front of uh, Tom Bruno's Law Office.
That three oh one west green, yeah. Tree number eighteen is uh, another sugar maple. Uh, we show that tree is also unhealthy and. Again, it's, it's very close to the intersection. So there's a significant conflict with the ADA ramps. To replace that, there to be replaced there. And then finally, tree number nineteen on the the north side of the street. This is right in front of the Urbana Free Library. That's a tree that's just currently planted in in a space that's really too small. It's not shown here, but the 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 um, plans for the sidewalk to be replaced actually show a taper down of the sidewalk to accommodate two trees just to the west of it. So you can see those trees on this plan. Um, within that parkway. So we were able to actually make a little bit more space to accommodate those trees. But tree number nineteen uh, is where the the curb actually starts to taper out for the intersection of Green Street and Race. So the, the new intersection will be a similar shape, but the curb starts to taper out here and that's just gonna push it, the curb. Too close to the sidewalk. So even with a four foot sidewalk there, we wouldn't be able to accommodate that tree. Um, so the the tree is planned for removal and then uh, we'll actually be able to taper back out to a five foot sidewalk. Once we're past those other two trees. So I can leave this up if we want for the purpose of the discussion, um, or. I'll uh, throw it back to Carol Perry on proceed.
I think there was public input. Well, we do have a lot of public input on this. Um, we could take that now, I suppose. And also, I guess if uh, city member, council members would like to then comment afterward or. Uh, after hearing public input, um, that's appropriate, I guess. So um, I'm locked up here in shared screen, but I can exit it, I assume.
I can stop sharing.
Okay, I mean, we can always come back to that, but um, allows us to see people who had their hands up. I do see the first one being Cynthia Hoyle. So uh, we'll unmute Cynthia.
Uh, Dennis, why don't we, why don't we start at the, with the uh, the emailed ones first? Yeah, the written ones.
All right, yeah. I guess that makes sense and I appreciate your guidance on that.
Okay, yeah, the first one that came in was a a petition from Laura Laura Haber. Which uh, you told me about, or you uh, you you have the contents on that one. Did you wanna? Do you wanna go further on that? Cause I I don't have the current status of it.
Well, I don't know what the current status of it except, um, I don't know, is, does Laura Haber wanna uh, make a comment on this? Or I can, I can share what I have relating to that. So there was a uh, a public petition. Uh, posted um, on the couple of websites. List serves that listed uh, concerns about the tree removal and uh, a significant number of community members. Contributed a comment or voted or whatever you'd like to say to saving trees on Green Street. And according to what I remember from around five, five fifteen or so, the number of response responses was. Five hundred and sixty, five hundred fifty-five, something like that, people who responded. Of them, forty-five people left um, comments and I would, I could read a few of those. These are petition signers. Please help save the beautiful canopy of trees along Green Street. They make the area cooler and healthier by Alice Engel Breton. It will take more than fifty years to replace a mature canopy that would be lost when these trees are chopped down. That was Laura Haber. These tree, these beautiful old trees are one of Urbana's most valuable and most widely loved and appreciated assets. The removal is for concrete bus platforms could create an implacable loss and re- and re-. Irreplaceable loss and in soulless landscape along Green Street. The Urbana City staff needs to stop building our city with chainsaws and bulldozers alone. And make uh, respect for nature and its healing as effects on the human soul are the design. Lona Matkowski. These trees are beautiful, part of Urbana and should be be possible to build around them by Andrew Stetslar. Please do not remove beautiful and healthy older trees. We need them. These trees are what makes the Green Street between Bucie and Race so beautiful. You will lose so much character if you remove them for bus platforms. That's from Em- Emmlet Turner Condal. Mature trees like these accrue to more than CO2 than immature ones. It's environmental irresponsible to remove healthy trees, mature trees like this. Do not mention the fact that the presence of such trees is healthier for local residents. Check the research before you proceed from Penny Lundquist. I've had a good experience with the city of Urbana and tree removal replacement in the past, and I hope that they can work with the homeowners. All along the way to save as many trees as possible and make solid plans for replacement. So um, the island was able to read eight of forty-five comments. So um, I will, uh, I placed Charlie in your email box. The full sheet that I've received. So if you wanna continue reading any of these, it's up to you.
I think you, I think you've captured the gist of it. We have several others uh, related here uh, from least fine. We have uh, eighteen old trees on Green Street. You are kidding, right? Uh, city of trees already damaged from tornadoes. Green Street, the main representative of our old town for some multimodal transit thing. What is that? Fifty years I have lived here, in one fell swoop, our beautiful green trees come down. More information, please. Do either people get to say anything? I'm on this decision. I'm floored, disappointed and upset. Then. The. Yeah, the last one I have is from Cynthia Hoyle and she may be, she may want to speak for herself.
Right. I would, before we go to Cynthia, I'd like to read one more. Cause it it addresses a question that came up in the presentation. If it is a matter of us getting egress rights. Please know that many of us know the property owners on Green Street and may be able to secure these agreements. And this is provided by Daniel Chenoweth. All right, so um, we'll post the rest of these. In the city minutes, however, there's quite a few that of people who probably would like to have theirs read. Okay, well, let's go to Cynthia Hoyle. And then we'll start taking public comments.
Thank you, uh, council member Roberts. Uh, as you said, my name is Cynthia Hoyle and I am a transportation planning consultant. I live in Urbana. And I was involved with the grant process that funded M core over many years. And I would like to start by saying thank you to the city of Urbana for all of the uh, support that you've given in staff time and in funding over the last several years. I just wanted to reiterate, the goal of M core is to provide a balance between all modes of transportation. Uh, to address pedestrian access routes, bike lanes, transit efficiency and vehicle flow and to reduce potential conflict areas. Uh, we were trying to expand mobility choices and increase user access to employers, education, healthcare and other services. Uh, also creating uh, complete streets was part of the project. And we were looking to improve each corridor with design components to allow for better travel by pedestrians, bicyclists, transit riders and vehicles. And this includes enhanced bus stops, pedestrian amenities and accessible curb ramps according to. The Americans with Disabilities Act. Urbana is a tree-lapping city and anytime we remove trees, it is heartbreaking. I have a yard full of trees. I love trees and the staff and the peo- citizens involved. And the property owners went to a lot of effort to try and preserve many of our beloved trees for this project, as was pointed out. However, creating a safe and accessible system for our residents and visitors who have mobility devices and use them like wheelchairs and walkers. Was the highest priority. And this project provides us with a unique opportunity to address those issues in our sidewalk system. And provide better mobility for everybody. The trees that are being removed on Green are going to provide space for much-needed, accessible and better sidewalks. And ramps so that those with mobility challenges and those who have vision issues. Are gonna be able to use the sidewalks more easily and more safely. Two bus stops will be improved to allow people to board without having to go into the street. This makes it safer, particularly for people using wheelchairs. There are always trade-offs, but providing for the members of our community who need better infrastructure to walk and roll is the high priority. And it's one that we're addressing with this project. And I want to really thank you all for all the support that you've given to this project. I personally am greatly looking forward to seeing this project implemented. As everyone knows. Uh, Green Street's in pretty bad shape right now. The sidewalks are in bad shape. And when we get this done, it's gonna be a fantastic asset connecting us to the university. Now, thank you very much. And if anyone has questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, so um, I I could uh, ask if there's any questions for Cynthia particularly here, since she's present. The only hand I see raised is Scott Dossett. I don't know if he has a comment for Cynthia or.
I know, just general to the issue. I didn't have any responses, Cynthia.
Okay. Um, any council member wanna mention anything at this point? Okay, well, we'll go on to continue with public input. Uh, Scott Dossett, you wanna continue then? You're the other person.
Yeah, thanks Dennis and thanks council and everybody else for all you do for our city. I've walked this whole area here and um, uh, since we agree, especially with some of the life. Safety concerns as noted by the city arborist. In general, uh, I was kind of shocked about the condition of several of these trees. And I think it really uh, causes us to to kind of challenge ourselves. I mean, it's, it's one thing to. Call yourself a tree city and it's another thing to provide adequate funding to an arboriculture crew that could provide. Uh, timely and scientifically based pruning techniques to prevent some of the damage that is evident on all of these trees. You know, we 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 love these things, but it's, it's very similar to some of the rental properties in my neighborhood. Where we use them and we use them and we use them without valuing them. Then we get what we call a wear down and. And tear down scenario. You know, the house are, in this case, the trees become uh, of little value. And or dangerous because they just haven't been maintained. So so that's a plea for your uh, arboriculture budget, I guess. Two trees in particular that I kind of disagree with. Two trees in particular that I kind of disagree with the rendering are happen to be number five and number six. The small, what looks like, uh, could have been a lightning incursion, uh, at about a hundred, about three hundred degrees on the bowl. Of that, uh, uh, sugar maple has got good callus growth and I think, uh, that that tree's far enough away from the roadbed. That it should be considered to be a keeper. And I'm also really just not, uh, uh, down by number six's. Plated root development that's right by the street there. It's a, a pretty unusual specimen. Uh, I believe this was a red maple. And so I would just ask to either advocate, uh, moving the stop that's in conflict there. Or perhaps platforming over part of that plate root system. This one's a little bit of a hard call to make because, uh, again, it has suffered from lack of pruning and maintenance over the years and. Has some pretty gnarly spots. And since we're talking about removing trees, I'm assuming that we're, um. You know, going to replace some of these and just a quick comment on some of the, uh, kind of odd grafted varietals that I see around town. I would hope that our species mixes would be basically, uh, native or near native and represent whole ungrafted trees. Which tend to be unstable over time. And, uh, that's about all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Hey, I appreciate your comments. Now I'm wondering if there's anybody else who has raised their hand. I see Carol Osberger and Ilona Matkowski will take those in order. Carol. Welcome.
Scott, I'd just like to, uh, comment on the replacements. While we're dismayed at the losses, I'm really encouraged by the gains. Um, they've done. You know, three times as many that, that are coming down or going in as new trees. I spoke with, um, our arborist today, Kevin Sanderson about the identity of the replacements. The, uh, Urbana Tree Commission this last year has put forth a policy that for the next ten years. All tree plantings will be by native species unless requested differently by the homeowner or site conditions don't allow it. So, um, while the current, um, specifications that we're looking at. Indicate some non-native trees, those are going to change, um, prior to planting so that they will all be native species.
And Carol, you're, uh, the chairperson of our Urbana Tree Commission.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Uh, alright, Ilona Matkowski, would you like to speak?
Oh, I'd like to speak, but before that, actually really, I have a question to, uh, uh, Ms. Cynthia Hoyle. Um, and my question, uh, is with respect to the bus stops. There are three, oh, I mean, uh, yeah, platforms to be built, reading platforms at bus stops. Um, I am wondering if these platforms can be moved. So the trees that are now in the way of these platforms, uh, don't have to be cut down. I noticed that six oh one, there is a beautiful tree. And on both sides of that tree, there is plenty of room for whatever six foot or I don't know, actually don't know the size of these platforms. That you are building, uh, room for those platforms. Why do we have to cut the tree down? So my question is, can we move the bus stop so the trees can stay actually at all of these places at. Uh, three oh one in front of the Bruno office, uh, there are two huge trees. Uh, and in between these trees, there is plenty of room for a platform. At eight oh two, the, the bus platform will take on a gigantic area. Do we need such a gigantic area for a? Street where there's only a single bus line running at any one time and very few people get on and off the buses at any time. I don't have a car and walk and take a bus everywhere I go in town. So I have decades of experience, both here and elsewhere in the world, riding buses and walking. And for my money, I prefer the big trees and their shade to any fantastic. Techno waiting platform. So can we at least reduce the size of the waiting platform?
So I don't know if Cynthia Hoyle wants to answer that. If she's listening.
Can I just raise a point of order? I mean, if, if the council has questions for the team, we're happy to answer those, but I didn't know that. Members of the public got to query each other.
That's fair. Um, we're making, we're, we're receiving public comment and, um, it's really not a debate. And actually Cynthia Hoyle doesn't represent the, the MTD. So. Uh, the point's taken. Appreciate that. And, um. We'll, we'll leave the discussion for the council members themselves. Alright. Then I don't know if.
There's one more Dennis, Alan.
Okay, alright, so Alan, let's go to you.
Thank you. Um, so the emphasis on disability accessibility is commendable. And one hundred percent important for this project. I'm actually a fan of the project and I really appreciate. That you walked through the existing rationales so that people who want to explore it even in a tactile sense can do so. That is excellent work and I applaud that. But, and I'm sorry, there's a but. Citing back to a conference or a forum held by the, uh, s- some student science policy group. I might have botched their name, SSPG, which included panelists like Carol Ammons, state rep. Scott Bennett, state senator. A member of the Union of Concerned Scientists, and I apologize, one other, uh, notable organizations speaker. And in that, they were remarking on how in the coming years, the summers are going to get dangerously hotter. And in that capacity, the tree canopies are crucial. Now that is not to say that if there is a tree that is imminently dangerous, that it should unconditionally stay. But whatever the EMCOR development project ends up being. We should make sure that it is safe in a climate literate manner. And so I urge that to be of concern for the development in a notable and explicit capacity. Because that may well end up being a matter of life or death. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alan. Alright, so, um, uh, are there any other individuals who are interested in speaking at this time?
Dennis, I have a comment. I'm not sure how to indicate that using Zoom.
And, uh, and are we, who are we talking to?
This is Steve Wall.
Okay, alright, you've raised your hand, I suppose. Okay, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, my video camera was turned off and I don't see any other buttons I can use to indicate. Okay, um. Uh, I'm a resident in Urbana. I've lived here fifteen years. Um, I wanted to, um. I won't repeat, uh, expressions of, you know, the desirability of mature trees or their rarity, their long time, their replacement. Time is lengthy by definition. Um, so like the aesthetic and environmental benefits of a tree grow over time and. Are at their peak when the trees are old. That's, uh, makes it work, makes it worth working extra hard, uh, to retain those trees as long as you can. Expressions of a tree's safety and health are somewhat subjective. Um, I'm comfortable saying that even though I'm not an arborist. Based on experience and paying a lot of attention to that. And, you know, you can look, for example, at this, our city's cemeteries to see examples of trees that are in sometimes drastically. Decrepit condition, uh, go on and endure for a very long time and, uh. They're obviously not exposing the public to danger, given their location, but they last a heck of a lot longer than you'd think. Even sometimes when they're in partial decline. There was a tree, there was a maple really identical to several of the maples on Green Street, a couple houses away from where I live. That had a canopy, the top of its canopy had dead. Branches and the tree was marked for a complete removal because of that. And it's really an analogous situation to many of the maples on green. Uh, and at that time, uh, I registered a comment with the city arborist. Was there an alternative to total removal? And they did a partial removal. They removed the dead limbs at the top of the tree and that was fifteen years ago and that tree is. Still there, fifteen years of additional life and the parts of it that are alive continue to live and it's safe and providing shade. And, uh, you know, I'm really grateful that the arborist said, let's take a chance on doing a pruning instead of a total removal. And, um, so I'd encourage, even though it seems tiring at the end of a long and expensive project to endure. More adjustments to a project. Don't let just momentum stop you from some careful. Managing of the public interest and looking for opportunities, make adjustments to improve the project. And I, I think that's what everyone here is, is hoping that, uh, can be done with these tree removals. Thanks.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Alan. Any other individuals from the public? Okay, so.
I'd like to speak. Uh, I raise my hands, but it doesn't seem that anybody noticed it.
I am noticing now, yes.
Okay.
You didn't quite finish what you were saying, so you have a couple more minutes to do.
Yeah, I thought we were just gonna have questions, uh, but I have something to say.
Alright.
Well, I am. Greatly dismayed at the, uh, uh, decision to cut down so many trees on, uh, Green Street as part of the EMCOR project. Clear, I walked this, uh, corridor, uh, three times in the last two weekends. And looked at the trees very carefully. I am not an arborist, so obviously I don't look at the trees with, uh, an arborist's eyes. However, uh, other than three, obviously sick trees whose removal is, is fine. And I can't argue with that. Uh, the rest of the trees to me seemed healthy. Uh, they are gigantic, majestic, beautiful. Individuals. Today I received a list of the reasons for cutting down the trees. That we went through with, um, went through with at the beginning of this meeting. And looking at this list and reading the problems with the trees, practically all of them or almost all of them. It seems that all we have along West Green Street in the project, there is nothing but a pile of rotten trees. Full of fungus with dried out branches falling down. The trees are ready to fall down to kill people, all kinds of diseases, uh, associated with these trees. Uh, but when I walked on Green Street, the trees told me something completely different, a very different story. They actually looked like they were thriving. They have gigantic, uh, crowns of leaves, full crowns of leaves, green. Beautiful, healthy looking. So it seems like they are doing very well. In spite of the report we received, so I cannot resist to say that maybe these trees haven't gotten the. Report from the arborists so far, so they don't know that they are so sick and they are actually, thank you, doing very well. Now, some of these problems that are listed on this list, I can't help but, uh, think that they may be. A result of years of neglect by the city. These trees are standing on city property, all of them. And, uh, this project, the EMCOR project, uh, the planning process started at least six years ago. I don't exactly know how long ago. But probably, I assume for six years at least or longer. The trees were neglected and so developed dry branches and fungus and blah, 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 many different things that. Were on their, uh, chopping up right now for wood.
And you have ten seconds left.
Okay, I, I would like to draw everybody's, the city's and the audience's attention to the fact that. These trees are not necessarily quite as sick as it was indicated to us in this list. And they are worth saving and thinking about how possibly we can save as many as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, Laura Haber is, has her hand raised.
Hi, uh, thank you for taking the time to explain about each tree and about, um. The rationale for cutting down each tree. And I also would like to say that, that I do support overall the EMCOR project and improving. Accessibility and, um, transportation along Green Street. And I also am concerned about the trees and I understand that there are often conflicting, uh, ideals of what we'd like. And sometimes there aren't easy answers when those, when there are conflicting ideals. And I would ask the city council to take some time to look at this and to reexamine each of the trees and see if they, um. There's any chance to save any of them. I know that people have already put a lot of effort into that, um, already. But, um, this is the first that many of us have been able to see what's happening for each tree and, um. You know, I've only had a few minutes to look at this list and see the situation for each tree. And also I have a question and I. Absolutely don't know the answer to this is whether the tree commission had any role in, um, giving input on each of these trees. Thanks.
Okay. We don't have, uh, a representative of the tree commission except for, I don't know if Carol's here, but, um, maybe. Carol Mitten would like to comment on that. I don't know.
I could, I would actually like to clarify, um, a, a few things and, um, maybe just. Wrap up if I could, sort of our presentation, um, before the, before the council, um, asks some questions. Could I? Could I do that?
I think you could.
Okay, um, so I, I'll, 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 I'll start with the last thing, which is I, I don't believe that the tree commission had any. Input, uh, as to which trees would be removed as part of the EMCOR project. One of the reasons why we thought it was important to walk you through. The, the decision-making around each of these trees is to reinforce. What I could say and will say to you in words and have said to you in words about the extremely. Careful process that was used in designing this project. To minimize the impact on healthy trees. And so this idea that things need to be revisited, I, I, I want you to, to, to really understand that. The, the work was painstaking and there were multiple iterations of the design. The design resulted in, um, numerous instances where the sidewalk would be, uh, would, we hoped. That the sidewalk could be routed onto private property and, uh, in order to save, uh, trees. And we were successful in negotiating, um, many of those easements, but unsuccessful in two cases. So that, and I, and I have to give a shout out to Dan Rothenmel, who is absolutely, um. Integral to the, to the, um, to getting the easements negotiated and finalized, although we had lots of help. But, um, Dan personally, um, negotiated, uh, multiple design iterations with a particular property owner. And I'm sa- saying all that to you to say, we have, we have really, really tried. The other thing I want to, I just want to, uh, reemphasize what Justin had said. Which is, it's not the condition of these trees alone. It's that we will be impacting these trees negatively during the construction process. And they are not up to withstanding that impact. So it's not just. Oh, these trees are in, in bad condition and they need to come down on their own, but for this project, we wouldn't be. We wouldn't be targeting the, this number of trees for removal. It's, it's the combination. Of the condition of the trees and the impacts of construction, either construction alone or. either construction alone or because there's an improvement to be installed there. And then finally, um, what I would like to, um, uh, well, actually I have two more things. One is, I, I, I don't believe, I, I just, I just don't want there to be misinformation, because I talked to, um, I talked to Kevin Sanderson. Also, there's this, um, I'm gonna call it a policy slash recommendation slash guideline that Mike Brunk developed with the Tree Commission regarding replacement species. And I don't believe it's 100% replacement with natives. I believe that it is 75% is the goal. We will, um, we will achieve that goal of 75%. Um, and that was my latest conversation with Kevin. Um, and then finally, I, I wanna, I, I wanna say, you know, this project is under construction. We are the last, we are, i- i- if you think of the, of the phases of this project as, as a relay, we are the last leg of the relay, and we have a responsibility to carry the baton to completion on time. In order to do that, we have to achieve substantial completion, which is all the major, um, construction by the end of this construction season. Or we are imperiling a federal grant worth millions of dollars. That's our responsibility to get this project done. We talked to the project team, whether after this issue came up after the project meeting last week, without jeopardizing the schedule, could they hold off on removing any trees until this meeting tonight? And they were able to do that. Any further delays are going to imperil our, our ability to meet the construction schedule, and will put that federal grant at risk. So I, I just want you all, I want you to understand how much, how, how hard we have tried to, um, to minimize the conflicts with healthy trees. I want you to know how, how many people have been involved in that, how many design iterations have been involved. And now the project is under construction, and there is extremely limited opportunity for any further accommodation. And I'm happy to answer questions now.
So, all right, I see the mayor raising her hand.
Myself. Um, I do want to emphasize the fact that we are going to be planting probably three time, or 47 new trees along this corridor, and with a much bigger mix of native species. So in the long run, their chances of survival and thriving in this climate are, are going to be better than some of the species that are there now, especially, uh, when you look at the silver maples or the Siberian, um, elms, which are, you know, um, and that sort of thing. So, so we have been planting trees all over the community. We've been fundraising for the past three years for tree planting. Um, we received a grant from the Morton Arboretum for over $14,000 for tree planting. The Urbana Rotary Club has been incredibly generous, as well as private individuals, um, and, uh, who have donated money. We are committed to trees in our tree city, and I don't want anyone to be, um, saying anything else. And I know you, uh, we all love our trees. But this project, as Carol pointed out, is FAB5 of a project that probably started over 10 years ago. And this street will become the main connecting street between campus and our downtown. And the fact that it's going to have curving sidewalks from Lincoln to Race is going to make it unusual in itself. And that reflects our commitment to saving as many of the trees that we possibly could that could stay healthy after and through, through and after this construction project. Um, and, and I, I have to again hand it to the staff who've worked for the past five years to, to, to modify this project multiple times and look at every single option along the way. And, and I appreciate our current and former staff for doing that.
Uh, all right, so let's have other questions or comments, and we have one now from Mary Alice Wu.
I thank you for, um, providing such a detailed list of all the trees, all the rationale behind, um, removal of those trees. I have a, a couple of questions. Uh, the first one is, how many of the existing mature trees on that street will not be cut down?
I don't have that number.
Could you give me a round number, like, uh, is it, are we cutting down 50% of the mature trees? Are we cutting down 20%, 75%? Can you just give me like a round percentage?
I'm gonna say, we're gonna cut down in terms of mature trees with, you know, um, we're, I'm gonna say it's a lot.
It's a lot, so more than 50%?
I think it's more than 50.
Okay, um, my second question is, I know that we have a rating system for all of our trees in terms of how healthy they are. And I know that, um, I believe our kind of cutoff for removal right now is a rating of seven or higher. Is that still the policy?
That I will have to, is, is Kevin on here?
I think he is.
I don't know if-
Can you hear me?
Kevin, are you on?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, our rating is seven or higher. We start at the nines and eights to remove anything nine and eight hazard rating, then we work down to sevens.
So the, the existing policy is pretty much, if we have the time and the funds to remove it, anything from seven and up is, is basically on the slate to be removed. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's accurate.
Okay, so do, I, you mentioned specifically a couple of trees that had a rating of seven, and then one that had a rating of sis, six on this list. Um, I'm wondering if you have a range for the other trees that you didn't provide the rating for?
I'd have to look up the inventory on that. Most of these are rated back in 2013 when the inventory came out. So from seven years later, you're gonna have a lot of ratings that probably are out of adjustment, probably need adjusted up. And most of these trees probably fall into that category needing readjusted.
Okay, all right. Um, and then I guess my, my last question before I let other people ask questions is, how much of a delay if, if the easement on those two trees, um, that could potentially be saved that the sidewalk was curved and we were granted an easement? Um, is that still plausible within the timeframe that we need to complete EMCOR?
Well, the, the trees in question are, are very close to where they're under construction right now. And I will say that, um, one of the property owners, when we were trying to negotiate, we had multiple conversations with him. Um, he was pretty, um, fixed in his position. Uh, and the other property owner, um, Dan Rothenmel talked to him last week and asked yet again whether he would consider granting an easement, and he said no.
Okay, so one, a hard no, and one, a pretty confirmed no.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, Bill Brown?
Uh, yeah, uh, thanks for the, uh, for the list and, and going through it in such detail. Um, I did go to the, uh, um, public meeting when this was proposed in 2015. Um, and the public, they had two public meetings. The first one, they didn't have much in the way of, uh, final design. They had a pretty good final design for the second one in September, and at that one, they actually had um, 17 trees marked for removal. And I pulled that up and went through, and it looks like about 12 or 13 of them are the same that we currently have marked. So over the last five years, um, there's been some shift, probably four or five trees that, um, either were added or, or changed or swapped. Um, well, a couple overall, I guess, that were added. So I was looking at a couple of the differences, and one of them was the, the very first tree on the list at 802. Um, that one wasn't on the list originally, so I don't know if the bus shelter was made larger there, or you decided because of the, um, condition of the tree that it might not survive. I just wonder, and some of these were, um, it's not physically in the way of the sidewalk, but you think that the construction, uh, may negatively impact the tree. I wonder if those might be reviewed, because it seems like those wouldn't necessarily delay construction, because construction's gonna happen i- anyway. Um, the only, um, difference would be whether you cut down the tree now or wait and see if it dies and cut it down later. So in that respect, I, I kind of agree with Steve Wad. There are trees, um, there's probably a third of the trees on most of our streets that would fall under some category of, of being in disrepair or maybe not able to survive something traumatic, um, but they exist for years and years. Um, so it might be worth looking at some of those and seeing if those could be, um, spared for now without too much, um, trouble or delay, um, and reconsidered later. And also, I think it would have been useful actually to have this list, um, with the Tree Commission. We have, um, several people with PhDs on the commission. They, they do a good job um, in coming up with policies and, and discussing things like this. And, you know, I don't know that much about trees. I, I think I do, but I know I don't. So I, I would appreciate, would have appreciated, I think, them being able to discuss this list and maybe making suggestions um, to go along with some of that. But, um, I appreciate the need to, um, to continue with the project. I would, actually, I walked the stretch a couple of times. I went up there again tonight, and I noticed that the tree in front of the library there, where they've already dug out the street, um, the first one to be removed on the east side is still there. I was a little surprised to see that, because I thought, well, they've already, um, you know, kind of dug out for the street there. But that's really, I think, the only place where the street itself is being widened. Um, as part of this project, that was one of the goals, was not to widen the street. Um, it was to remove the parking to make room for the, uh, bike lanes. So the street itself is, uh, pretty much in the same, um, same position. But I guess the sidewalk's being replaced, and some of that will be widened. Um, so I understand that it can have an impact. But I just wanted to throw that out, that maybe some of those trees, if they aren't physically in the way, you might be able to, um, delay removal. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Do, any other city council members? Okay, Eric Jacobson.
So like many other people, I'm not a tree expert. Um, my view of this is however colored by the fact that we had a near-death experience with a beautiful silver maple in front of our house on the city parkway, which unfortunately had a hollow trunk. And when it came down in a windstorm, it just barely missed crushing one corner of our house. It broke off high enough from the ground. So when I hear silver maple hollow trunk, and when I hear that repeatedly, I think maybe it's okay if they get replaced with something else. I'm gonna guess that, I looked at Google Maps quickly to try to estimate how many big trees are along there, and it's probably somewhere in the 40s, I would guess. Uh, I couldn't quite count them that quickly. Uh, so maybe the 19 is, is a little bit less than half. Um, but hopefully it'll be a greater variety. I think that philosophy of tree planting has changed. People used to plant monocultures, and now they go for much, you know, one, an informed opinion goes for much greater variety, and that's good. Um, I think growing young trees are pretty good CO2 extractors. Uh, can I, can, can you remind us again how many trees you will plant?
There will be 47 replacement trees planted.
Okay, so we'll come out of this, although it'll be quite a few years before the new trees become mature. Uh, hopefully we'll come out of this with a better tree cover than we have now. It'll, you know, I'll be long gone, but that's nice to think about. I think, I think I'm okay with what you are proposing to do uh, with the assurance that, that there will be a variety of trees so that they don't all get the same illness, uh, and that there's gonna be a larger number of trees. And of course, like, as other people have said, I, I totally appreciate the improved, you know, the improvement of how motor vehicle traffic and bicycle traffic and pedestrians and buses will all be able to, uh, to coexist. That's, that's a really high ideal in, uh, in planning for cities of the future, for our city. So I, I can shed a couple of tears for those big trees coming down. But I think, I think it's in a good enough cause.
Would anybody else? Mary Alice Wu, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, so, um, I, I think that Bill's, uh, suggestion is a really interesting one. And I'm wondering if Carol, what do you, Carol and the, and the arborists, what do you think about on delaying cutting the trees until we understand better the impact of the construction and the sidewalks, et cetera?
I, I can't make any recommend, I, I, and I, I cannot in good conscience make any recommendation to you here tonight will delay the project, and that would delay the project.
So I, let me rephrase. I think that Bill's, um, idea was not to delay the project with the trees that need to be removed based on the infrastructure that needs to be put in place, rather that the trees that are being slated to be removed are, um, that could potentially be damaged by the construction, that be held off until we understand better what the impact of the construction is. So it's not all the trees. It's only the trees that, that we have that concern about.
That's understood, um, but as, as you know, the project is moving from east to west. And what you're suggesting, in, at least in the, in some cases, would require us to reconsider, basically pass by a tree, reconsider it, and then potentially ta- take it out subsequently when we would have moved on. And so that's what's problematic about that suggestion. Um, I, I would commit to you that we can, we can look at the, at the trees that are farther down the street that are, you know, sort of ahead of the construction and have that conversation. I'm not going to, I'm not going to make any representations about the outcome of that conversation, but I'm willing to have that conversation again with the team. But not for anything that needs to come out in the next up to, I think what we figured out was what the next wave is gonna be like up to birch. Justin, is that right?
Uh, stage one of construction goes to McCullough, so, uh-
Yes, Birch.
Pavement remote, removal has, um, has already gone past cedar and, and headed to, or past birch soon, so-
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so I, I would say anything in that first stage is, is likely to come out, um, really in that first wave. The other thing that, uh, our contractor, Deuce Construction, you know, wanted to point out was that we, we don't wanna be dropping trees on new pavement. So if we are gonna remove trees, that needs to come out before any new infrastructure goes in.
So we can, we can, we can make a commitment to revisit the trees that are, um, west of McCullough and see if there's any candidates there.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to, to do a, a comments, a couple of comments or questions. Um, so, um, uh, Bill Brown, do you wanna chair for a few minutes, so I can raise my hand?
Sure, I'll take the chair, and the chair recognizes Dennis Roberts.
Okay, thanks. Um, I, uh, totally understand, uh, the value of the EMCOR project in our community. And I applaud the idea that the connectivity between the campus and the downtown will be improved, especially, it's gonna be a delight to have some, some, uh, good bike lanes along the street and a good street surface. But because the, the width of the street's not really changing, and although we are putting in new sidewalks, which will be a great improvement, um, I, there are a couple of trees, and I've indicated them in an earlier letter to the city council members, which I, I don't see really that the damage is so severe, nor, um, that the trees are in the way of either the proposed construction. Uh, and especially in the fact that some, the trees that I was really concerned about are farther down the block in the 600 and 700. are farther down the block in the six and seven hundred, the six hundred block of um and the four hundred block, which will not be affected currently by the construction that we're seeing now. And I've observed also that construction is is going on, the steam shovel is tearing up the street and the trucks are coming in and out. And I have not seen any conflict between the steam shovel and the truck drivers and any overhead tree limbs. We haven't seen them being snapped off by the equipment. You know, so when the choices come to take these tree down before the cement is being poured, and I think that we're going to be seeing the instruct, the any, the creation of the curbs and the gutters before the cement is being laid out. It seems to me that we have probably two or three weeks that we could actually revisit the tree, trees that have concerned the community the most. So, I mean, I would recommend that. I like Bill's proposal. I appreciate Steve, uh Steve Wall's comments and Scotty Dossit. Scotty Dossit is a, is a forester. By, uh, he has a a degree in forestry and is is a, has advised and worked with the Park District for his several years and burns at Meadowbrook Park and other places. He's done um the removal of invasive uh trees and brush in the Park District. He and I walked to the street um about four days ago, and we evaluated each individual tree that was being considered. And there were three trees that he thought didn't have to come down at this time. He didn't see any real reason for it. And there are, okay, slight blemishes on the, some of the exterior bark, which he noticed were growing back. It seemed the tree was actually healing itself. And and as far as the, you know, he mentioned the, the elaborate root system that was at four eleven, I believe it is. Um, um, Green Street, and he said, well, you know, all you need to do here is just put, you know, build a deck over the roots and let the tree live. You know, and you could still have your bus surface. You could still have your bus stop. So you just have to like, you know, be more creative in your solution to maintain the trees. The last thing I'd like to point out is, well, that I I wouldn't mind having maybe a few more days or maybe until next Monday to put together uh what I think would be a cogent reason for reconsidering some of the tree removals. And I'm not against several of them because they're obviously ready to go. But we have our own database, which is a valuable tool to evaluate the trees and their value in the community. And I'd like to put together a presentation for the city council members to consider before every single tree on the list that we've seen as marked in red X is actually cut off. Um, the last thing I want to mention is that I've heard about um a chance for public input back in two thousand fifteen, when it wasn't on anybody's radar that this to in any kind of real way about the fate of trees in Urbana. We were all aware that there, what was going to happen is a road pavement project. Well, now the public is, is the, the details of which trees are coming down was only released about two and a half weeks ago. And the public is looking at it, and they have a lot of concerns. And there's been a petition signed already by about, perhaps by now, six hundred individuals in the community and near the community about the tree removal. And as a Tree City USA, I think that we could be maybe a little more retrospect about cutting every single large tree down because of the value they have to the community and shade, hydrology, and um the produ- production of oxygen into the atmosphere. A small tree that we plant and replace a large tree will be one twentieth as productive in those features as the current tree we're taking out. So the value of our trees, if we're talking about sustainability and the the green footprint of Urbana, we're actually would be going sort of backwards until the other trees we're planting, which is a great thing. We're going to plant forty more new trees or forty-seven new trees, whatever, in this section, and I pro- appreciate that very much. But we are going to be reducing, well, we're going to be increasing our carbon footprint just by taking the trees down that we are talking about tonight. So there are some issues here that I think if would be, I think it'd be wise, and I'd like to suggest that the city council take one week and come up with maybe a list of trees that that really they want to look at more seriously to, and to allow the staff to have a conversation. And before we say, well, you've got, it's a done deal, and tonight we're saying we're rubber stamping it. And you know what? It's another example of being rushed at the last minute where the public doesn't have a chance to even absorb what the concession, what the decision is. And I just really, I've always not really enjoyed being asked at the city council meeting that tonight it has to be decided because, you know what, we have a schedule and this has got to go. And we experienced that with the construction at two hundred Vine Street, uh, which didn't seem to pan out as we were like told. So, okay, that's my comments. I think a few more minutes, a few, maybe a few more days of reconsideration before we make any kind of final recommendation to staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Uh, Mayor Marlin and Relentless should chair.
Okay, thank you. So Mayor, please go ahead.
Diane, you need to unmute.
Okay, I'm I'm unmuting you or trying to unmute you, Mayor Marlin.
I can do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I I just wanted to provide a little history on this project. Um, this has been in the works, I think, for at least eight to ten years, and it's a part of a nearly fifty million dollar federal project. And of course, you remember, it's a joint project with the city of Champaign, the Mass Transit District, and the University of Illinois. And as was pointed out, we are phase five. So this is the tail end of the project. Um, it was part of the Tiger Grant. It was a combination of um local, state, and federal funds. And we have commitments, you know, we, the city of Urbana has financial commitments on this project. Originally, we were slated to start, I believe, construction on this phase in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen. Is that right, Justin?
Yes.
Okay, so so we, it's been pushed back and our costs have increased, um, you know, during that time. Um. We, and and I I can't emphasize enough that this is not a question of we waited till the last minute to tell anybody. What we ran up against with is last year, we discovered um transition and staff that the easements that we needed to obtain to save these, any of these trees had not yet begun. And that's when the staff kicked into high gear and um contacted, how many different property owners did we get easements from?
Roughly thirty.
Thirty. So that was thirty separate individual negotiations with thirty individual property owners, and we were successful, you know, with thirty people or with twenty-eight out of the thirty, it sounds like. Um, that took a lot of time, and we couldn't bring anything to council until we had the results of those negotiations, and those went up through this spring. And all of those negotiations were focused on saving trees, and most of those are large trees. So um, I don't want anyone to be left with the impression that we're clear-cutting this street, which is, you know, I I I get the impression that people believe that. We're not. It's, it's as many as possible of us, of the large trees were preserved, especially through these easements. And that's going to be determining the, and that is determining the design of the sidewalk. But um, that there, it's not a question of waiting to the last minute. This is the way these projects work. And when there's federal money involved and state money involved, um, we'll be on the hook for it if this project isn't completed.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Bill Colebrook, you haven't had a chance to talk. It's your turn, sir.
Yeah, well, I waited in kind of late. Um, so um, I too am not an arborist. Um, however, I love trees just as much as anybody else. Um. I guess my concern is uh what the mayor just said, is I don't think we are waiting till the last minute. I think this project has been in the works for years and years and years. Um, I do appreciate the the emotion and the passion that the citizens bring to this uh this discussion. And um, you know, the emotion and the passion that, uh, you know, my fellow members here in the council bring to this discussion. However, um, I think I would be voting for basically fiscal responsibility, not wanting to jeopardize a construction timeline, not wanting to jeopardize a a federal grant. And uh basically, I appreciate the discussion. I appreciate the debate. But I think uh the discussion after tonight should end, and I would not be in favor of uh kicking the can down the road for even another week. Um, like I said, I think this has been in the works for many, many years. And um, and I I think we would be uh foolish uh with our money if we just kept on debating uh an, an issue even as as emotional as trees are. I I think it's a, you know, progress. Um, Green Street. Um, I I think it's a, it'd be, we'd be best served if we uh trusted the, the, the endless hours as described by our staff members, uh multiple people that have uh weighed in, that have um, you know, knowledge uh with trees have weighed in. And there's, there's only two trees on the entire list that um, that have not been graded in some form or fashion as being susceptible to to damage and or illness. Uh, so it's two trees out of nineteen that, um, you know, once again, that those weren't um the fault of anybody else, except, you know, the, and and owner uh declined to give, um, you know, easement rights. So I think the staff did a, an incredible job of trying to minimize the number of trees, and I think it's, it's time to move on.
Thank you. Jared, take a chance and take a turn, please.
Just two quick comments, uh, one point of order, just to remind everyone, this is just a discussion item. We're not voting on anything here tonight. Uh, this is brought forward to the public so people could be aware of what's going on because of the large concern. But council's not taking any action on this at all tonight. Uh, my other uh comment, just to say what I think could come out of this productively, is uh considering in future uh tree removal conditions that uh, I forget what the uh, the commission is, but uh, the.
Tree Commission.
Say it again, Dennis.
Urbana Tree Commission?
Yes, that's right. It was exactly as simple as I thought. I just thought I was making it too simple. That the, that the UTC would be able to use some of their knowledge base to weigh in uh on analysis as well uh outside of city staff just themselves. I think that would be useful to allow folks to realize that we, you know, I don't, just believe that we've taken a lot of effort to do everything that we can to save as many trees as possible, and we are planting forty, forty-seven new trees, though I do understand that it's not a net negative carbon. When at the time, it will be over time, but not at the time of their planting and the others' removal. But it's all relative to the expenditure of 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 carbon in our projects anyway, because the amount of carbon going into the creation of the street far, far outweighs uh anything that we can do with the trees. So in a realistic trade-off, it doesn't really make that much difference. Anyway, my thought to staff, uh, Justin, uh, and Carol, just looking at uh the Tree Commission for advice or secondary opinions on, on uh future projects. That's all. Thanks.
Okay, is there any other comments before we close uh this, this um presentation? Okay. I, I just want to say that um I rec, I appreciate the, the offer. I think it's an offer that um Carol Mitten has made to uh have the option of reconsidering some trees that are perhaps in parts, the second part of this project without delaying the current part. And um, maybe we can have a conversation about that in the near future.
Well, but we'll give you an update as soon as we've um done our analysis.
Appreciate that very much, Carol. And I must appreciate the fact that you've been very um uh timely in presenting information to us and trying to keep us updated. I just, I just regret that the public itself, um, the community hasn't really been invited to participate in um or early to be informed in a way that is um maybe through a community meeting or something like that to to discuss and absorb the impact that this is going to have for their, for their part of town. That's all.
I think that um when, when we're, when this issue is behind us, it's probably worth having a conversation about how the council wants to um review designs for various um road projects in particular, because, you know, we've talked tonight about trees and we really, which is fine, that was, that was fine. But um it it is, to have a proper discussion, you have to have the discussion that we have had internally, which is about balance between trees and infrastructure. So um, I, I, in the future, if that's something that you want, we need to, we need to be able to present things in holistically as opposed to just talking about one aspect of a construction project. But I look forward to um having that conversation subsequent to, to this one.
Yeah, thank you very much. That's very thoughtful. All right, I guess I'll uh move on then. I'll close this section of the um uh, the meeting, and we can go to our agenda again. But thanks, everybody, for their uh thoughtful comments, the public and the committee members here, the city council members and staff. Um, will there be a staff report at this time?
I don't have any.
I see somebody's applauded. Okay, Bill Brown applauds.
I was just applauding staff. They did a good job.
Yes, okay, very good. All right, no staff report at this time? Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the ordinances on the agenda. The first one is ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero four dash zero two two.
Oh, actually, I'm sorry. I did have something during staff report, just.
Go ahead, then. You got it just in time.
Yeah, um, that's really the only time we have to kind of propose future topics during our um Committee of the Whole Meeting. So I'd like to take the opportunity to propose super, uh, future topic in two weeks for, um, to review the reports that we're to be receiving from the Citizens Police Review Board and the Human Relations Commission. I know back in October, November, I asked for one of the reports on taser use, and um we still haven't received that, and we haven't received some, sometimes. So I'd like to um suggest as an agenda item in two weeks. And if that, we have reports from those um commissions at that time. Um, any reports or something that'd be fine. If not, then we can just um discuss among ourselves the current status of the uh city code and and whether, whether that's adequate. As far as reporting goes, I don't want to delve into any uh functionality of the commissions or anything, just um, just the reporting.
Okay, very good. And now, Mary Alice, I recognize you.
Um, I I don't know, usually for agenda items to be added, we need a second, and if that's the case, I'd be happy to be your second, Bill.
Thank you.
All right, so we have enough uh response from the council to place it on the agenda. And you are requesting it for two weeks in the next Committee of the Whole? All right, thank you. Well noted. All right, we're going to talk now about ordinance number twenty twenty dash oh four dash zero two two. This is an ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter fourteen, Section fourteen through seventeen through seven dash seven regarding uh schedule of fees subsection A uh liquor licenses. This is uh those fees from July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, the physical year. Uh, who would like to make this presentation? It says finance. Okay, the mayor, Mayor Marlin.
I'm wearing my hat as the local liquor control commissioner tonight. So uh, just to recap for the public, um, you remember back in February, the city council um passed the new liquor code that's going to go into effect on July first. This is code that was completely rewritten over the past year. And then um in uh April, on April twentieth, you received and placed into on, into on file the proposed um liquor license fee schedule, and that was separate from the liquor code itself. So in the past thirty days, we um, we sent it out to all the licensees, uh, asked for their questions and comments. And then there were a couple of questions from, that council had raised at the meeting last month, so I wanted to address those. Um, we to, received a total of three responses from existing uh licensed owners. We've been in contact with them pretty much constantly over the past two months due to COVID-related things. But in terms of response to the liquor license sched, or liquor fee schedule, one person just said, uh, looks great, looking forward to the new. one person just said, looks great, looking forward to the new code. We had two other responses from current licensees and we've included the entire email correspondence between the Kate Levy, who's our deputy liquor control commissioner. And I'm not going to go over those tonight, but you have them in your packet. And I think we satisfied or at least responded very thoroughly to to their concerns. And then you had a couple at the last meeting, council members had two questions and I can address those, and that was also in your memo tonight. One, the question was why the we set a fee of four thousand dollars for the the annual fee for the class Inc., which is the incubator license. And the reason for that are several reasons. Number one, this is, if you recall, is a classification that we created in order to give flexibility to our code for a business model that we really don't have a license for or a classification for. But we wanted to encourage, you know, innovation and creativity. So so we created this license classification and we certainly hope people can take advantage of it. The reason there's a fairly high license fee attached to it is the labor cost attached to this. This is going to be a custom license from beginning to end or a custom experience from beginning to end. And it'll be Kate mostly who meets with our prospective business or licensee. There it's going to involve multiple meetings, well, probably phone calls today, but perhaps in person meetings at one point or in the future. It's going to involve possibly, they're going to have to develop a business model, they may need business counseling, not from us, but we'd be referring them. It could revolve review by legal department, by public safety, by our building inspectors, building safety people, depending on what people are proposing. It's it's basically, and then probably familiarizing people with state and the state liquor code as well. And it's just going to require a whole lot more work with one individual proposed business than we typically have. And then if the license works out and the business model appears to be a success and we think, wow, we should just make a new classification because this could be replicated and used by somebody else. And that involves drafting new text for the liquor code and getting that through. So it's just a whole lot more customized individual attention. And and that's why that was set at that level. And then the other question we had was related to the microbrewery license. And when you look at it on the surface, there was an astronomical increase from the microbrewery license, and that is because in the old system or the current system we're operating under, the microbreweries currently have to get the microbrewery brewery license, plus they have to get another liquor license, depending on what they want to do and sometimes another type of thing. So we folded everything into one license and the actual cost to the owner to do business under the old system and the new system is within fifty dollars. And and if you want to look at one example in our downtown, we have a microbrewery. They have an MB two license, which allows them to brew on the premises and and sell. They also had to get a sidewalk cafe license and then they got a class B license, which is to sell their own beer. Well, in the new system, all of those activities will be folded into their one license, and they'll also be allowed to sell packaged liquor for no additional fee, which is an additional source of income. So so while on the chart, it looked like a gigantic increase in cost, it's really about the same. And those were the only two questions we've received from council members and and the public since this was, since this has been on file.
Does anybody have any questions?
I I did have a couple of other things I wanted to share with you. Given the COVID, you know, everyone is well, the the our bars, our our licensees, our liquor licensees are among the hardest hit by the pandemic because there are bars and restaurants. So and and I said, we've been working very closely with them constantly since the beginning of March to help them adapt to their new way of doing business and to get through this time. But we're gonna, we're gonna try to make this as easy as possible for folks. If if a person, if a licensee doesn't want to renew and then renewal period is actually coming up, starting, they need to renew by June nineteenth. And then, as I said, the fiscal year starts July first. If they choose not to renew, for example, if they're still closed, they can postpone the renewal, there won't be a late fee, but they will if there's but as long as they're completely stopping the sale and service of liquor, but they can renew at their convenience. And we're going to waive the late fee application and we'll prorate it for the year, so they won't have to pay for the whole year. And we always have the option of people being able to pay their liquor license fee in installments. So some some owners in the past have chosen to do that, so they pay in July and December. And I have a feeling everybody's going to do that from here on out. And that's, but the bottom line is, you know, we've been, we'll work with our owners and we have been all along.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Okay, Jared, go ahead.
I didn't have any questions for the mayor. I just was going to make a motion to get this item into discussion because most of what I have to say and we need to talk talk about in council under discussion, I feel like for this item. So if it's acceptable or if anyone else has questions for Dan first, I'll withhold the motion, but.
We can probably accept that.
I'll move ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero four dash zero two two and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter fourteen, Section fourteen dash seven regarding the scheduled fees subsection A with regard to liquor licenses be sent to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Second that.
I think Sharice was the first one to do that. Is that right, Craig? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, all right, okay. Sharice, second it. All right, let's open this for now, discussion if we'd like to have some. Yes, Jared.
If I lead off, I also just, you know, before we get into any of the nitty gritty of this, Diane, my kudos to you and Kate and Jim for all the wonderful work you guys have done on this. And Kate, for her brilliant idea of the incubator license, that was I didn't even think of that. And that was a, it was a great meshing of different things we've been discussing. I've got only two real things that I've got problems with in this. Of course, I still have an issue with the volume of the fee of the incubator license, and then I have an issue with the fee amount for the RT two license. I'll go into the class Inc. license first. The only way that I can propose to fellow council members to think about this is that, you know, I I've thought a lot about how the city is going to go through the process of of helping somebody you know, start a business that basically doesn't exist, and this is a really wonderful vehicle to do it. I also know that startup capital for businesses, especially anybody who might be adjacently thinking of a new idea of how to sell alcohol that doesn't currently exist in our code is probably not going to be somebody who, you know, just has a revolutionary idea that, you know, they're getting capital, venture capital funding, you know, millions of dollars and a four thousand dollar fee is a good, is going to be insignificant. I think that this license is much more likely to extend itself to entrepreneurs and people who are probably not going to be as as well funded as one might think when you're thinking about doing something that involves involves alcohol, because alcohol has been explored pretty thoroughly in this country for a long time. And, you know, most people have thought of most of the ways that there are to sell it. So in the context of thinking about it in that fashion, you know, four thousand dollars is a lot. I know I've had ideas that could have been used for this and that would have been, it would have been really hard. And I understand, you know, even if it was only two thousand upfront, you know, it would still be a lot. There are a lot of, there are a lot of other things that come into consideration for that and, you know, and that that's enough to say about that. So, you know, we're weighing, we're weighing off here really the opportunity between what we're what we're willing to provide versus what it's going to cost the city. And in this particular instance, due to the fact that there's probably not going to be a lot of business proposal proposals that come through this. So this isn't going to be a heavy revenue driver for the city that I feel like, you know, knowing we're not going to get ten, twenty, thirty ideas like this, you know, where we would really actually be driving some some serious revenue for the city. We get one a year, that would be, you know, I I think great that somebody could come up with an idea of how to sell alcohol in a new way that doesn't currently exist in our in our code, you know, you it is just not a lot of opportunity for that. So our trade off is costs of, you know, are people doing what they've got to do versus the service that we're providing? And I feel like in this situation, I would advocate that losing out a little bit here as far as what our monetary reward is, is worth the value of what we're giving to innovators and entrepreneurs in Urbana. I think it's much more likely that you're going to attract people with a lower fee. You're going to make it much more viable for people to want to see something come to fruition and they're going to look at Urbana differently to say, oh, hey, well, I know it costs money to start businesses and anybody who's got any half a sense is going to know it's going to take some sort of monetary investment. So I'm not advocating for zero or anything like that, but I am advocating that we consider a much lower amount than what it is that because we're not going to see so much of this, we're, you know, we're we're trading off that. So I've got another one to go on that, but I think I I'd be interested to hear people's feedback before we continue on to my other discrepancy.
So does anybody like to make a comment or offer their suggestion at this point? Mary Alice?
I think Sharice was before me and since I.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I didn't see her.
I did one of these things.
You did the visual. All right, thank you. All right.
I think that the city of Urbana has oftentimes been seen as as a as a city that might not be as supportive of business, and I think this is really a great opportunity for the city to show that we're here to support a variety of kinds of businesses. And I'm talking about the incubator license here. I I would love to see some new interesting businesses arise in the city of Urbana. And I know that in the past, when we've looked at fees, we've looked at the amount of time that staff puts in in order to process those fees. So I I understand that viewpoint. But we also expend a lot of time and energy in supporting our businesses as we should, but not on on a amount of time to cost, meaning we don't, we're not charging for other things other than licenses. So, you know, Brandon talks to developers and so forth, trying to drive up and get interest and figuring out what kind of programs can work for them. And I think that this really is an opportunity to do that for new businesses, for new business models. Four thousand is a lot, and it's actually one of the highest charges. I think it's on on par with the, I think the highest charge that we have is five thousand right now in the in the code. And four thousand is close behind it. So I think it would be much more realistic for new businesses that are going to be starting probably small to be able to pay a thousand dollars for a license for the first six months. So I, you know, I think that Jared's right about that kind of price point. So I would be in support of lowering that specific one right now.
Okay, and Sharice, did you want to comment? Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, well, first, you know, Diane and and Kate, you guys did a great job in in reworking the whole fee structure, period. With that in mind, I'm also saying I think I have to agree with Mary Alice and Jared is in with the incubator thing. I I think that was taking into consideration the pedaling. Was that taking into consideration the little pedaling bicycle bar or or no?
No, that's that's got its own license.
Okay, because.
They have not taken advantage of it, but you did create that several years ago.
Okay, but and and the other only other thing is kind of like what Jared was saying as far as, you know, selling liquor seems to be have seems to have been used in every way that we can think of. However, Jared, I was going to say to you, there was a place I used to go to in Santa Monica that was all frozen drinks, like like icy kind of drinks, but it was like, you know, frozen daiquiris, frozen margaritas, frozen this, frozen that. And we don't have one of those places. So I would love to see.
That would come into our existing license classification.
It might, it might work in the incubator thing, but I do think we could, we could probably stand to lower that fee in the sense that because of the fact that when, especially where restaurants and so on and so forth are concerned, usually you you never know where where it's going to go, if it if it's going to catch on, how long it's going to take. And if somebody dropped four thousand dollars on a incubator fee, it that may be cutting into other other budgets. So I do think that is the one fee that we could definitely send to lower a bit. And just like like Mary Alice said, maybe for a thousand dollars for the first six months. If it catches on in that first six months, or I would even go so far as to say probably eight, just just to see. Then the a a a chance that that we could create another or a different type of license, not a different type of license for them necessarily, but there's probably something in that list of of licenses that we have that you can put together to to help help that business grow even more. And thereby, you know, them getting a different license would mean them paying a different fee. Because it is a, you know, incubator fee.
One thing I I did forget to mention, we we do have another option, especially if somebody wanted to try something once, we still have our temporary liquor licenses. So so people could get a temporary liquor license and try it for something and then they could do that again, you know, so you could get several temporary liquor licenses. So that that would be an alternative to an incubator license.
Okay. All right. Yes, Eric Jacobson.
Is the incubator license or the incubator fee patterned on or similar to something that other cities do? Is there another experience, body of experience to draw on?
Nope. We came up with that on our own.
That's great.
I shouldn't say, and it wasn't frivolous. It was, it was as a, you know, after talking with a lot of community members and a lot of the business owners and getting input from people, it 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 just occurred to us that we we needed an offer, a way or a vehicle for people to try something out. But rather than in our old way of doing things, if someone came to us with a different idea, we just created a new license, and that's how we ended up with almost thirty different liquor license classifications. To avoid doing that, we have our basic classifications, we have the writers that can be added to that. And then we have this incubator that is a safe space for people to try out a business model. And this just isn't a fly by night idea, you know, people need to, people are going to need to come with a business plan. They're going to need to show evidence of of the, you know, financing, they're going to, it's going to go through multiple layers of review before they get this license and then it'll come to you, like all the other liquor licenses, it'll come to you to the city council to approve. So so we want people to take this seriously and it's not just of. so, um, we want people to take this seriously and it's not just of, you know, a one-off thing. This is a true desire to start a business and come with a plan. And, and people need to take that seriously.
So I wonder if it might be possible to have an initial fee of a thousand dollars, what has been mentioned here tonight. But with an additional rider that if the idea succeeds, that we'll, we'll collect, you know, some balance of that four thousand later.
Well, we do have the option. It's for six months and then there's a six, and at the end of six months, they have the option to renew it for another six months. And then by then we should know that, you know, it's a go or it's a no-go. So we do have that.
Yeah. So I would say let them get in for relatively little. Where we are risking taking a bit of a loss on staff time. But the reward, you know, the risk versus reward sounds pretty good, especially because it's unique, uh, to us, which I think is absolutely great. Um, and, but, but yes, put in a provision that if they really start to make some money, that will also, the, the, the fee will go up.
Thank you, Eric. I see Jared has raised his hand and then Charisse.
Uh, you know, Diane, if we're willing to at least spread that fee, I still, I still would advocate that four is, is too much. Uh, but I mean, even if we, just because you're doing fifty fifty with everything, my real concern is with two, not four. So I would take one for three, uh, one on the initial and, uh, three on the six months because, you know, we did, you and I both talked about this and I don't disagree that coming to somebody with at least a six month commitment or a year long commitment for a license, you know, means that you're taking it very seriously and everything about that. I don't think, I know from my experience in people in entrepreneurial world, if you're willing to spend a thousand dollars, you're probably taking it semi-seriously. So if you're, I would work with one upfront, three on the back end. I would be willing to do that rather than lowering the entire thing.
Then, all right. So now Charisse, Charisse.
Um, yeah, I think my question is how many times, um, can the business owner, uh, renew the incubation fee? Is it the same as like with the temporary license?
Well, our, our, the way it's written is they could get it the first time and then they could renew it one more time.
Okay.
For six, the total of a year. Yeah. And by then, you know, you either know it's gonna, you know, you know, it's gonna work or you know, it's not gonna work.
Now, what's the difference in the temporary license and the incubation fee?
I don't have my fee schedule and the, the other fee schedule in front of me, but it's cheaper. It's, it's less. Cause you know, it's for a shorter period of time. So.
Oh, the temporary one is for a shorter period of time?
Oh, yeah, yeah. You know, that's the kind of thing that people typically get if they have a, a, an event. So.
Okay.
If you have a really wild idea involving frozen drinks and you want, you know, and doing one, a one-off event, then that's what you'd want to go with. But if you want to start a business and, um, you have a great idea and it involves alcohol, this is another option.
Temps are ninety dollars. Charisse.
Okay, thanks, Jared.
Okay, Mary Alice.
So I'm, I'm looking over the fees right now and if the council feels comfortable with the one thousand for the first six months, I think it would be fair to make the second six months be two thousand. So the total year fund would be three thousand. And as I look at the fees on here, the fees range from three thousand to five thousand. So that, that would equate to a yearly license fee of three thousand if they had it for both six months. I'm just trying to see how we can, how we can be fair in terms of the other licenses that we have and the, and the cost of them.
I could live with that. I could live with that.
Good. I think I feel a bit comfortable with that as well.
Sure.
Our goal right now is to just help businesses survive. I'll tell you that. So.
All right. Dan, Jared, you want to talk about a second item? Is it, are you ready for that or not?
I, I did, but I want to go ahead and propose an amendment, uh, at this time before we discuss the other item because they're separate ideas. Uh, I'd like to propose that we change the, uh, class kink license to a three thousand dollar license with a initial fee due, uh, of a thousand dollars and a secondary fee six months later at two thousand.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, made by Jared and seconded by Charisse. Further discussion? I don't see anybody. All right. Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we make that adjustment. Right? That's part of our, our, uh, work tonight on liquor. Do you want to continue now?
Sure. The second one is, uh, the RT two fee. Uh, so I did a lot of number crunching on spreadsheets and looking at, uh, fees are going up, fees are going down, how to, you know, what's the best way to, you know, judge fairness on this? And without going into extraordinary detail, because it's already nine twenty and we still got, uh, two more, two more things to discuss on our agenda. Uh, what I will propose, uh, what I'm proposing is a reduction in the RT two license from three thousand to twenty-five hundred. Uh, the reason I'm proposing that five hundred dollar change is because if you think about, uh, the RT one and two lights, the RT licenses and the class A licenses are essentially the same, except one serves bars alone and one serves, uh, places, food establishments that also serve alcohol. So they serve different places, but they essentially function in the same way. And in our approach towards them, uh, the, the only difference between uh, class As is that we have a class A that will allow sale of all kinds of alcohol. And we have a class A that will allow the sale of beer and wine only. The difference in fee between those two is one thousand dollars, four thousand dollars versus three thousand dollars, an extra thousand dollars to sell the alcohol for the functionality of selling alcohol in a bar only. Uh, that's our most commonly used license. Uh, the RT license for places like, uh, Crane Alley, Broadway Food Hall, any of our restaurants in downtown Urbana, uh, there are two kinds of licenses you can get, the RT one and the RT two. The only difference between the two is the same as the difference between, uh, the class A higher fee and the class A lower fee. One allows for, uh, consumption, uh, of all alcohols, sale of all alcohols. One allows for beer and wine only. The difference between those two fees is five hundred dollars as proposed. I would propose that it would be fair and equitable for the difference to be a thousand dollars just the same as it is between the class A full liquor and the class A beer and wine only. So, uh, I don't know if there's any further discussion, but I would like to propose an amendment uh, to change the RT two license from three thousand dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars.
Can I add, can I add one bit of information? I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Mayor.
Um, just another, uh, aspect to the RT two licenses, we did write in the provision that if your total alcohol sales are ten percent or less of your, of the total food and beverage sales, then there's a, um, uh, twenty-five percent reduction in the liquor license fee. So that would accommodate, um, oh, restaurants, R and T, restaurant, R and T stands for restaurant and tavern. So that would, would accommodate businesses that have, are offering alcohol because their customers like a beer with a meal, but you know, alcohol isn't a huge percentage of their business. So there is, that reduction is there as well.
And I, I, I wouldn't disagree that that's not, uh, appropriate. Uh, yeah, I, I forgot to mention that.
Other comments?
I'd be looking for a second on my motion.
I would second that motion.
Okay. Motion by Jared, seconded by Alice, Mary Alice. Others? Others, uh, any, any more comments? Okay. I'll chip in. I thought, well, okay, I'm going to be liberal about it and say I kind of agree with Jared. All right. Um, all right. So there's no more comments. Let's take a vote on it. All those in favor of making the slight reduction as Jared is proposing for the RT, RT two, indicate by saying aye.
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 Great. It could be a split, maybe. Those opposed? Oh, all right. I guess we have that.
Can you repeat that so I can get that written down? Jared?
Uh, just a reduction in RT two from three thousand yearly to twenty-five hundred.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So if it's a stimulus to save a little bit of money, and I think everybody loves to get a bargain, um, let's hope this thing works out for us. And we have, uh, a multitude of these people applying for this license.
Let's get them open eventually.
Yeah, well, you gotta have someplace to disturb it from and then have your customers come in. All right. So, uh, any other discussion? So we've, we've modified the, the, um, original ordinance by two amendments, and I think we understand what they are. So we'll take a vote on the amended ordinance. All those in favor of sending this forward to the city council with approval, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that goes forward as indicated. Okay, thank you. All right, let's look at my agenda again. All right, here we go. Um, next is a resolution number twenty twenty dash oh five dash oh two three R, which is a resolution approving the Champagne Urbana Solid Waste Disposal System annual budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one. And it says public works with, is Carol going to come in on this one or is somebody else? Do we have?
It's Scott Thomas.
Okay, Scott, are you, uh, available to speak to us?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
I see you and I hear you. Yes. Welcome.
So the Urbana Champagne Solid Waste Disposal System is a joint action agency that manages the monitoring and maintenance of three out of four landfill parcels at the closed Urbana landfill complex. The system has two members, City of Champagne and City of Urbana. And as such, the, the budget for the next fiscal year for the system is before you tonight for approval. We'll take any questions, yeah.
Would anybody like to ask a question? Mary Alice Wu, you have a question to hand up.
So, um, the nice thing about this budget is that we're making money and not losing money due to the, uh, the solar lease revenue. Um, can you remind me, uh, in terms of, if I remember correctly, they were going to pay a large fee upfront and then there would be smaller fees in the next years. Is that correct?
They're going to pay fifteen years worth of lease in upfront in one check.
Oh, okay. So this is a one-time thing.
If they, if they are able, so their first business, if you will, is a fifteen-year business of selling solar. If fourteen years, six months from now, they find a, a business proposition to extend the life of that array, then they will continue to operate and then start paying us annual lease payments as well. That would be in addition to this fifteen-year lump sum.
Okay, all right. And how much do we typically contribute? Um, in our memo, it says that due to this lease revenue, we won't be contributing anything because our costs will be covered. So what is the usual typical amount that we contribute?
Typically forty to sixty thousand dollars a year.
Okay, so for this upcoming year, uh.
Sorry, I say, the budget is typically forty to sixty thousand dollars a year. Urbana contributes about half of that. And then the university actually reimburses twenty percent of the previous year's actual expenditures.
Okay, so that means that this budget, I think it's for sixty-four thousand for the total expenses. And you, you just said that the typical expenses are approximately forty thousand?
Forty to sixty thousand depending. We have twenty thousand dollars in this fiscal year budget to pay for a replacement sampling well. We have a well that is, um, not performing properly.
So it's approximately for one, two, yeah, four years that this lease will cover operating costs. Is that accurate?
I'm going to say, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think it's necessarily the intention that we're going to drain all that lease payment revenue, you know, and not make any contributions. However, the members, considering the economic uh, impact of the coronavirus, the members chose to, to, uh, forego uh, contributions from Champagne and Urbana for this fiscal year.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, great. Bill Brown, you, your hand is up. Go ahead.
Yeah, just to, uh, follow up a little bit on that. So I, I understand like for maybe this year and maybe next year we'll have reduced payments, but presumably there are probably improvements that we need to make, need to be made to the surface or to more wells or erosion prevention or things like that. Um, that we'll be able to use a large chunk of that for, that we may have been putting off. I don't know if there's any that you, you kind of have in mind that you want to do, but, um, I think it's important to realize that our regular payments will probably kick back in pretty quickly here. Does that sound right, Scott?
Yeah, that does sound right. I think what you described are good examples of, uh, of investments we want to make in, in protecting the landfill or perhaps protecting everything around the landfill, um, from what's inside of it or maybe inside of it. Um, certainly I'm, I'm eyeing some, some vegetation removal projects in the not-too-distant future. Um, we're working right now on, I mentioned replacing the sampling well, but we're doing some significant maintenance that we're hoping will not be expensive on the, the leachate, um, pump enforcement right now on the Cusworth's landfill.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? If we could entertain a motion.
I have a question.
Yeah, all right. I didn't see that. I'm sorry. Charisse.
Just ignore me. No, just kidding.
I'm sorry, dear.
Actually, what I wanted to do is move for resolution number twenty twenty oh five zero two three R, resolution approving their Champagne Urbana Solid Waste Disposal System annual budget fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, uh, being moved to city council for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Charisse, seconded by Jared. Other discussion before we vote? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that's forwarded to city council with approval. Okay, I think we have one more item on our agenda. Which I just lost again. All right. This is the last item. It's the ordinance number twenty twenty dash oh five dash zero two eight. An ordinance approving the amendments to the City of Urbana Consolidated and Annual Action Plan for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty and the citizen participation plan. And, um, is Sheila Dodd still with us?
Yes, I am. So, thank you, um, the City of Urbana. Yep. City of Urbana Grants Management Division received notice that we were awarded two hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, um, to prevent, prepare and respond to the coronavirus disease. Um, the additional funding requires us to do these two amendments, one to our consolidated plan, annual action plan to add the funding and the other to our citizen participation plan. The citizen participation plan allows for virtual hearings as well as a shortened, um, public hearing or public comment period, which we can go as low as five days. So in response, um, just here. Um, in response to the pandemic, Congress passed this act. And again, I, like I said, requiring us to amend the consolidated plan. Um, so the announcement from HUD indicated further guidance would be forthcoming. However, they were, we were all encouraged to be in moving forward with planning for the use of funds. Final guidance has not been received at this time. The funding is to be used to prevent, prepare and respond to needs of low and moderate income persons impacted by COVID nineteen. The funding needs to address gaps in service and, and not duplicate services provided by other agencies or federal and state funds. or federal and state funds. Staff's been working closely with local governments, surveying businesses, social service agencies, homeless service providers, economic development groups, the Housing Authority of Champagne County, and CU Public Health to identify community needs. We are also looking at best practices throughout the country to identify programs to address those needs. Um, by completing these two HUD requirements, um, it takes care of our administrative responsibilities and will help us be able to implement programs quicker.
Okay, sounds very positive. Um, any comments or questions about this plan? Okay, Jared?
Hi, Sheila.
Hi.
Uh, so, can you, uh, just elaborate a little bit further on what exactly we're changing about the consolidated plan with the additions of this money other than the sections indicated in your memo?
That's really it. We added the funding, and then we added the language that we would use the funding to address the impact on the community of the pandemic.
Okay, um, what are our next steps going, going forward with this? Uh, for, I know we have to do the, uh, the input, and then we have to decide what to do with the money. Uh, obviously, this isn't, uh, from at least what I've read, we're not deciding what to do with it now. We're just kind of adding this in so we can accept it and receive those funds, correct?
Right, right, and staff will continue to do, um, research and, uh, make recommendations for, or programs to implement. Uh, hopefully, the first part of June, you know, we need to get the money out the door quickly.
Okay, um, I had looked pretty, uh, thoroughly through this, and, uh, before, uh, I, I just don't know what the process is going to be, so I wanted to just take the, the opportunity to highlight one of the, uh, particular instances, which was, uh, in, uh, oh, I guess it's right after the ordinance in the memo, and it's the quick guide. Uh, there was one, uh, item in there that had caught my attention, which was, uh, the second large item, assistance to businesses, including special economic development assistance, and the provision of assistance to private for-profit entities appropriate to carry out in economic development projects, and then it has those two, uh, uh, supporting, uh, and more defining, uh, uses right there. Uh, I know probably a lot of folks looked through this and saw opportunities that wouldn't be there otherwise, and I'm certainly not advocating that this is the only place that we should spend money, but I personally know that there are a lot of, uh, small businesses in Urbana that are not getting funding the way, uh, folks need it. And in order to maintain, I know a lot of people didn't receive PPP loans, which is awesome and great, um, that, that folks did, and that will disqualify some, but there are an equal number of people I know who did not receive any, uh, PPP funding and don't really have any other options. You know, like, uh, the downstate, uh, business, uh, I forget what the full name of that one is, through the state, but, you know, Champagne Urbana is disqualified from that because we receive funding, and I was expecting that it was because we were going to get some sort of CDPG funding through the CARES Act, and it turns out that I was right, that we were going to.
Yeah.
So, I don't, I just want to put that in your, in your ear, that there are a lot of folks who I've, uh, let know about this since I saw this, uh, uh, in our packet last weekend, and people are very, very interested to figure out how the city can offer an opportunity to folks that they might not be able to apply for elsewhere, so I just wanted to share that with you.
Sure, we've been reaching out to businesses, um, you know, on a personal level, just to see how they're doing, but to ask them if a program is developed, you know, what could we do to meet your needs? Because obviously, there's, there's not enough money to address the needs, but, you know, what can we get the biggest bang for our buck and, and help as many businesses as we can? So we are taking those things under consideration. Um, that and, and, you know, potential loss of income, people losing their housing, we don't need to add to our homeless population. So those seem to be the two biggest needs that are coming up, but as of yet, no definite programs are designed. We're still in that, you know, research stage, and the fact that we can't duplicate services, um, you, you know, we're gonna have to be careful on the wording of things as well.
Well, if there's anything, uh, I can do to help out in the, in that business aspect, please, uh, don't hesitate to reach out to me, I'd love to be involved and help.
Sure. Okay, we'll go down the line, um, Mary Alice Wu next.
So I would, yeah, just as, uh, Jared said, I was really pleasantly surprised that there would be additional funds for small businesses in this. As I looked through the examples of eligible activities, um, that the government had provided, I, I wanted to ask two questions. The first one is, is there's, um, some information there about, uh, facilities for testing, diagnosis, and for treatment? And I just wanted to find out if we're asking for public health, really, to take the lead on that in our community? Um, so that might be one reason why we were not considering using these funds for that purpose. Is that, is that true?
Um, yes, they seem to be the lead agency, and they've received funding as well, so that allows us to focus our funding on the Urbana businesses and residents.
Um, the second thing is that I was thinking about overcrowding within people's houses. Uh, so if somebody in a household is diagnosed with COVID, um, and they live in close quarters, one thing that we could think about using these funds for is providing some kind of lodging or something so that, so that those family members can be, um, have kind of a safer environment, and we can, we can assist in that. Uh, so that was just an idea that I had, um, and then the third question I had.
There's currently funding available for that, um, through public health. So that's what's kind of making it difficult with the, these funding decisions, is we can't duplicate services. Um, but I know that they have funding to allow, um, people to go to hotels for up to fourteen days during that quarantine period.
Okay, that's, that's fabulous. I mean, I guess then my third question was more about publicity. Um, once, once this is, uh, once the, the, uh, group decides on how best to serve the community with these funds, um, do you have any ideas in terms of how to reach out to different people that may not traditionally leverage different government programs?
Um, I do have a couple of thoughts. If we, uh, do, like, one of the programs that we could potentially design is a, a rent assistance program, we could market that through the landlords that are on our, um, certified, um, rental list, you know, that, that it would help their tenants, and by helping their tenants, it in turn also helps their business. Um, if we decide to do something for our small businesses, we have a list of over a hundred and fifty businesses that we've been doing outreach, reach to, that we could launch, um, a marketing campaign through to say that these funds are available, and here's the guidelines. Uh, thankfully, HUD has allowed us some flexibility, um, but unfortunately, I just think it's gonna be a small pot of money, you know, typical with our federal dollars. We've got a thousand dollars worth of needs and ten dollars, you know, of money to address them, but, you know.
Yeah.
All right, okay, thank you.
And, you know, if others have ideas on ways that we could publicize anything, I would be happy to. I'd like to focus our money on people rather than a marketing campaign, but there, we can be creative and save money at the same time.
Yeah, and I wasn't really thinking of kind of a formal marketing campaign, but, uh, you know, just knowing that these funds are available for people that might not even think, oh, well, you know, I could go to the city and see if they have any programs. I think that there's a lot of people who wouldn't even consider that, so.
Sure.
No flashy marketing campaign, but just outreach, um, and I think certainly reaching out to the local landlords through the rental registration is, is a great way to do that.
Okay, the next person would be, uh, Bill Brown?
And, yeah, I, uh, had kind of the same concern that Mary Alice had about crowded housing, and I know I've, I've emailed you, Sheila, about it before. Um, but I guess I was thinking not necessarily from moving somebody to a hotel for fourteen days, um, once somebody's been diagnosed, but as a preventive effort where there are two families living together or crowded housing where, um, one or two people may be working out in the community, and they have a high risk of exposure, but they may not have been exposed yet. In some cases, those families, uh, one of them, or, or some portion of the people living in that housing may already be on a waiting list for housing, and in other cases, they aren't. So I guess I'm wondering if, um, this portion that we can use for housing, it looks like maybe a hundred thousand is set aside for that. Um, I wonder if that could, if we could use our community networking through the continuum of care, or Housing Authority and other contexts that we already have to help identify some of those households that would benefit, um, sort of preemptively from getting assistance to create a new, another household, not, not in a hotel, but actually get, um, lodging for some period, six months or something.
Uh huh.
Have you explored any kind of possibility like that?
The Housing Authority did receive additional funds that they can use, that they are, um, taking referrals from the continuum of, uh, service providers to the homeless. And so when they come across situations like that, they can refer them to them, and they can use their voucher. So there's a lot of emerging programs that, that aren't necessarily public yet, um, that, you know, again, that makes it, uh, difficult to meander through this maze of programs because we can't duplicate benefits. Um, but certainly, um, overcrowding is a concern. And, you know, one of the other concerns we have is, um, sometimes it tends to be cultural and how to overcome that barrier of, um, people, you know, wanting to separate their family and, and, uh, instead of a multi-generational housing, each generation has their own home. Sometimes that's difficult to, to do. We've experienced that with some of the pork plant, uh, employees, so we are keeping it in mind.
In some cases, I'm sure the, um, the older generation may have childcare responsibilities, or maybe the middle generation has order care responsibilities, but it just seems like there are probably households that could benefit, that, that don't want to live, like, live in that multi-generational household, but, um, just can't afford to separate. Um, so it'd be nice if we could identify those and sort of help them preemptively. If, you know, if there's money from the, um, Housing Authority to do that, that, um, that's great, but if there's a gap that, if, uh, if they can't respond quick enough, and we could make this so, sort of a quick response fund or something like that, um, I'd encourage you to look into that too. But I know, I know you know that we're interested in that, and you're interested in that, so any, anything you guys know that, or can do that, to help creatively enhance that problem, that, um, you know, figure out how to deal with that problem, that'd be great.
Sure.
Okay, Sharice?
Um, yeah, I was, I was, my question was just basically, will any of the monies go toward affordable housing? Because I was looking, looking through this, and, and, um, as I was reading it and was talking about, about the barriers to affordable housing. So, how, how will we be able to, will we be, uh, allowed to use any of this money in any way to, uh, assist with that?
Um, the funds have to be used to prevent, prepare, and respond to impacts of the pandemic. So affordable housing is a huge need in our community, but, um, you know, we can't use these funds to construct new housing, or, you know, to provide to a nonprofit to construct new housing. But maybe we can use the funds where, say you were a waitress at a bar, and you were current on your rent, but now, all of a sudden, you're unemployed through no fault of your own, and you can't make your rent payment. We could use these funds to help somebody stay in housing. Um, so that's, that's where the affordable housing piece would come in. Or maybe we can create with, you know, some of our home bonds, a short-term, uh, rental program that, that, you know, following HUD's guidelines would end the end of December. So there's opportunities to keep people in housing or to, uh, get them current on their rent and utilities, but we couldn't put somebody that wasn't in housing into housing.
Well, what about what, what Bill was talking about, when he said, you know, you may have the multiple, that, that multiple generational family that lives together, um, you know, and there are all these other issues possibly, you know, childcare or elder care? And so, would it be, would it be possible, I guess, when I think about affordable housing as well, that i-if, if in fact there is, you know, an opportunity for, um, a, um, a, uh, a, a family or a family member to, to be moved someplace else to try to keep that, uh, possibility of anyone being infected, so on and so forth? You know, if they're living in close quarters and so on, would, could it be used for that, for something like that?
Um, potentially, we'd have to think through, uh, the guidelines and how we could prove that their condition before and the condition now is, is different. So, you know, I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just saying we'd have to be really thoughtful. One of the things that we've heard a lot about is, um, there's gonna be a lot of oversight into how these funds are spent, and so we want to make sure that our programs are as inclusive as possible, but yet really do address that, prevent, prepare, and respond to the needs of our low-income persons impacted by the pandemic.
Okay, and these are funds, they, they're coming from Washington, right?
Yes, yes.
Oversight, okay.
Okay, very good, Eric Jacobson.
So you're probably way ahead of me on this, Sheila, but I would guess that some of the social service agencies that we work with and help to support are really being stressed and stretched by the pandemic, and in ways that maybe their resources could be augmented consistent with this. Does that sound right?
Um, potentially, the homeless providers are receiving a large amount of money. Emergency Solutions Grant has come through the state of Illinois to the county, and so some of the agencies that address the homeless needs, um, have received funding there. Some of them received it right away, so the shelters were able to extend, um, services that were supposed to end April fifteenth. They're now extended through the end of May, um, to keep the, um, men's shelter and the women's shelter both open. So, um, you know, we are in contact, I'm having weekly meetings with them, but again, trying to identify those gaps so we can design programs to help benefit the greatest need. And it's a little less than three hundred thousand dollars, so it's not a huge amount of money, um, that's coming forward at this time for us.
Hard choices.
Yeah.
Sheila, I've got a question for you.
Sure.
I, uh, is the expenditure of funds, um, in any way tied to the, uh, the census tracts which, uh, indicate the lower poverty communities within, uh, within the area?
No, no, they.
Be get, get focused into those areas in particular.
Right, um, this particular pot of money has to assist a low-income person, but if that person lives in southwest Champagne, um, or not Champagne, I'm sorry, southwest Urbana, or, you know, as long as that household is low-income, we don't care what census tract they live in. Um, same with the businesses, as long as the business can, can show that they were impacted by the pandemic, which should be fairly easy, um, they just have to be addressed in Urbana.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for Sheila? Is there a motion then?
I'm happy to make a motion, Dennis.
Okay, Mary Alice.
Um, I'll move ordinance number twenty twenty zero five zero two eight, an ordinance approving an amendment to the City of Urbana Consolidated and Annual Action Plan for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and citizen participation plan to city council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second. Eric Jacobson seconds. Is there other discussion concerning this? All right, sing on. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes. All right, so these items have been sent to the, will be sent to the city council for approval next week. Um, thank you for having the good discussion about, uh, the EMCOR project, and, uh, we'll wait for an update, uh, in our next meeting to find out, uh, further information about the emergency orders and the status of the, the state and our community in regard to the COVID nineteen emergency, uh, programs. Um, any other comments? Um, any other comments or questions before we close tonight? Seeing none, thank you for participating, I call the meeting adjourned.